Good evening and welcome to the Milton Planning Board's 10th meeting of fiscal year 2017. I'm Brian Furges, I'm the Chair. I'm going to ask my colleagues to introduce themselves.
I'm Alex Whitehead, member of the board.
Michael Kelly, member.
Julia Getman, clerk.
Tim Czerwinski, Assistant Town Planner.
April Lamarril, member.
Cheryl Taguayas, member.
Our Director Bill Clark is also here this evening. He'll be joining us in a moment. The Selectmen of Milton will also be joining us in just a moment. Tom, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure, Tom Hurley, Board of Selectmen.
Great. We have a very busy agenda tonight. We have a very full house. I'd like to first ask everyone to silence your cellphones in advance. We are going to have, tonight we're going to have Citizens Speak. We're then going to have our new business agenda, which will include master plan implementation committee update, and a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen on potential ice house development. Milton Landing planning efforts will be looking also at a review of town, past town meeting articles referred back to the Board. That'll be done as we can fit it in around public hearings. We have a 7:00 hearing with CB Richard Ellis, Bank of America, for site plan approval for 2 Elliott Street, which is continued from November 10. At 7:40, we'll be hearing from Pulte Homes on the special permit for cluster development. Milton Woods Town Farm Site, continued from November 10. And we have at 7:45 Dennis and Martha Burke for a special permit for cluster development. 245 Highland Street, continued from November 10. I believe that will be continued. So if anyone is here for that application, we will be continued this evening. And then we will have, if we have time, we'll get into any old business. There is none on the agenda. If there's anyone here for Citizens Speak tonight, before we start, anyone speaking publicly tonight, because of the large crowd here, we're going to ask that all comments be kept to three minutes or less, if possible. We're also going to ask that if someone has said something that you agree with and you'd like to reiterate it, please feel free to just reference that comment and state that you are supporting that initial comment. And we will keep time on that. So just keep, try to keep your comments concise for the purposes of getting all of our business concluded tonight. We're going to start with Citizens Speak. If you're here to speak on something that is not on our agenda this evening, please let me know. Anybody? Is there anyone in the hall wishing to speak or Citizens Speak? All right. Yes. Please come forward. Yes.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Aneta McSweeney. I live at 250 Blue Hills Parkway.
Thank you.
And I become, I come before you again to express my concerns about going forward to change the zoning at the Ice House property.
So let me just interrupt you just for a moment.
Yes.
We are having testimony tonight for Ice House specifically, with the Board of Selectmen also here to listen to it. So I'd like to ask you to hold off on your comments so they'll be part of that record. And I'm happy to call on you first, since you now came forward. Okay?
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other speakers for Citizens Speak, I'm going to begin with our 7:00 public hearing for CB Richard Ellis, Bank of America, site plan approval for 2 Elliott Street, which is continued from November 10. While he's setting up, I just received word the Pulte project for special permit for Milton Woods Town Farm Site will also be continued this evening. So if you're here for that project, you may also, you may want to take, we'll be opening it at 7:45 but immediately continuing it to December 8.
Can I make a comment on that? I thought we were going to discuss that with the Selectmen as trustees.
That's...
I'm not sure that they're all going to be here.
And it's not on the...
It wasn't noticed?
The Board of Selectmen probably wasn't noticed, yeah.
We discussed that in our last meeting.
We don't have the trustees on the agenda. We've only got the Selectmen.
Did you want to talk about this at our last meeting?
Ooh, we did.
We did.
On Wednesday or the one that, this past?
Past.
We wouldn't have had time.
Not noticing it for both the trustees and the Selectmen.
Well, we wouldn't have had time to notice it anyway for this hearing.
What if we only needed two days?
It has to be separately noticed for both the Selectmen and the trustees.
You can't just notice the Selectmen if you want the trustees.
We did, we did talk about it. And Tim said that we, it wasn't, I understand about both being notified, but at that point last Thursday, you said there was time to, but I'm not saying that it's your fault that it hasn't happened. It's just, we did talk about this.
We just let the applicant leave anyway. So we'll have to do that.
Just a missed opportunity with the Selectmen here to talk about affordable housing, which is an impediment for us moving forward.
That'll only slow down the next Pulte meeting, right?
Okay. We didn't notice it anyway, so there's, we couldn't have discussed it. Okay. So, so you have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Matt. I'm based with Boulder Engineering. I'm here to talk about the 8A improvements at the Bank of America 2 Elliott Street. I'm understanding you have a full agenda. I'll pick right up from where we left off. Unless there's any and I'm happy to rehash anything that we talked about that night if desired. So the comments from the Board from that night, the first one was regarding the chain link fence we have proposed here on the existing retaining wall, here on the proposed retaining wall coming down. We sent a spec sheet of something we'd like to use in his place on. It's a heavy duty ornamental aluminum fence with kind of a spear top, generally looking like the one that's out there now, a little closer rails, but it's similar. So we'd like to use that in place of the chain link fence for the Board's comments. The other comment was regarding the handrail here, regarding the steel gatinized finish of it. The black finish is certainly what we prefer as well, so we're going to go forward with the black finish. We did look into potentially a more architectural friendly type rail. Unfortunately, we do need the rails to be circular or oval, or at least rounded and at the heights that they're at to provide any type of architectural feature. We'd have to strap those rails to something else. And I think the brick facade of the building kind of provides a nice background, especially with the, the black blending in there a little bit more. The third comment was from, from Bill regarding the fence up here. There's an existing rusty three-foot chain link fence up at the top of the hill along High Street. We propose the same fence that we're using here, kind of just extend that down to our property line and tie it to the existing chain link fence at our property boundary. And lastly, the planning staff had commented last night, just some concerns, or just some comments about stone wall runoff coming off this concrete sidewalk. We propose the stone infiltration trench here at the bottom of that to catch that runoff. Basically, that'll be as a two foot deep, two foot wide along the length of the concrete sidewalk, but basically catch the, the first flush of rainfall and infiltrated and then have an overflow to, to the parking lot for larger rain events. So, so those are the improvements per, per the comments. Happy to answer any, any questions? Anyone has about that?
Can you just clarify? So the fence that you're, you're going to use, this fence pictured here as a replacement for the rusty chain link?
Correct. Yeah, that fence I think looks like it's six or eight feet tall. We'd use a four foot tall version, but yes.
As, as well as along the new?
Yeah.
Um, sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you, do we have all of these plans, Tim, to pull up or no?
Uh, no.
Okay. The revised drawings on sheet two?
Yeah.
There's a guard rail next to the handrail.
This over here?
Yes. So are they independent? So they're not attached to one another?
The handrail and the, and the guard?
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, the guard would be mounted to the outside and they, it would be attached to it likely, but they don't necessarily have to be. They just certainly both have to be there for that particular staircase.
Okay. So I think I asked for a section through there so we could understand how that's going to work better. But that guard rail is called out to just be code compliant? It's not called out to match the other fencing that you're proposing to put in?
Sure. I don't think we want to put the spikes on the top right there by the stairs, but we certainly provide something that has the same type of feel as far as the rungs, the vertical ones.
And that, you said that that, that's going to be mounted where?
The pedestrian guard. It'll be right at the edge of the stairs. I'll show you on the plan.
But relative to the handrails?
It'll be separate from the handrail. So there's also a staircase proposing here to kind of an employee entrance or an emergency address. So it would be along here.
Right. That's, that's where the guard is, right? Because you're not having a guard rail at the ramp. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep.
And is that, is that guard rail going on both sides of the stair and then wrapping around the platform to the building?
It would be just along this side and along this side here.
So it's just a handrail on the building side then?
Correct. Yeah.
We can have that.
So you know, you could, you could have that handrail actually be supported off of the guard rail and not have to have it be independent, right?
Absolutely.
So it should be a much cleaner look, right?
Sure. If you'd, if you'd like that, we could do that.
So could we do that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'd like to see that. I mean, you can ask for that to be done in that manner. I guess I'm not suggesting necessarily that we have to delay it further, but I would like to have that be one of the conditions.
So you're fixing the rails to the wall as opposed to having the...
No. Right now, if you look at the sheet two?
Yeah.
The detail called concrete stairs with handrails?
Yeah.
There's a guard rail and there's a handrail. And there's...
See the guard rail.
The guard rail is, what's called out is the 42-inch high pedestrian guard in the background?
Yep, yep, yep.
Got it? Okay. So typically, if you're going to have a guard rail and a handrail on a stair, you could have the handrail supported off the guard rail. So you don't have to have two different separate systems anchored in. So my suggestion is that those two guards...
So you're just mounting it to that.
You get rid of the, the vertical posts and you have that be a bracket off of the guard rail.
That's what, okay. That's what I thought you were saying.
Yeah.
Would you like to suggest some language to go into the approval?
Okay. So in, I would reference the, the concrete stair with handrails detail on sheet two. And I would like to say that the guard rail being proposed at the stair match in style appro, I guess we could say without the, the...
The spares on the top.
The spares on the top match the fence that's being employed?
So the guard rail, you're going to have to repeat that. I'm sorry.
Okay. So the guard rail is to match the fence in style exclusive of the...
The top, uh, the top spear.
The top spear.
And will be attached by...
And the handrails will be attached by bracket to the guard rail without vertical posts, without separate vertical posts. Right. Is that, is that good enough?
Yeah.
I, I think the, the proposed fence is fine.
Thank you.
And I think it matches up well enough.
Any other comments? Mike?
Just the, the cinder blocks used in to create the encasement for the, the, this, this face will be visible from the street, right?
Correct.
I mean, you look down the alley and you'll see it.
Yeah.
These segmental blocks that you use in every place else, is there any way you can just put it on this exterior face?
Um, yes, probably or something very, very similar to it if that's okay. Yeah.
Otherwise, I mean, you do, you're putting a nice fence in?
Yeah.
You're doing a nice job with the railings. And I'm going to look down the alley and I'm going to see a block wall.
Yeah, sure. No, they have the segmental block walls that are, that have a very nice...
Obviously, the interior, the exterior, the file wall.
Yeah.
But this, you're going to be looking at the nice front face of the building, the work you've done on the side, and then you're going to be hitting the face with it. It's just an ugly block.
Absolutely agreed. Yeah.
Just one other thing. We talked about...
Hold on, Cheryl.
Okay, sorry.
So Tim needs modification language for that. Mike?
Did you follow that?
In, in theory.
Okay. I guess that would be the...
The trash enclosure wall.
The trash, the north, north face of the trash enclosure wall will be covered with segmental blocks or similar material?
I'd say similar finish to the, the remaining retaining wall.
So the north face of trash enclosure wall will be covered...
With material similar to the segmental block.
Material similar to segm...
Will have segmental blocks?
Yeah, that's the other estimate is that.
Yeah, the remaining wall will be a segmental block wall.
With segmental blocks or...
Or similar.
Similar materials.
Yeah.
The, we talked last time about the spacing of the posts on the fence?
Correct. Yeah, I did look into that. They're spaced eight feet as you go along and then the last one spaced 10 feet.
Okay.
So the fence, the proposed fence, we're using our eight-foot interview fills. I know for sure they'll be able to get it exactly to that center, but I put a note on there for them to line it up as, as much as feasible.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, it's because of the public.
Anything else from the Board? Anything from the public on this application? Anybody in the hall? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Come on. Approve.
I need more than that.
Very efficient.
This is a special plan?
Tim's language isn't ready yet.
I plan approval with the two conditions.
Well, do we, we didn't review, can we review the language of that? Sorry.
Yep.
I think that we want to refer to the revised plans and we want to refer to the
Yes.
...the conditions we've made.
But, Tim, could you just read the modifications you made and then we, I will ask for a motion?
Excuse me. May we also put up the draft language on the, so that we can go through the conditions that are here as well? We haven't discussed these.
I know, but rewriting this tonight is, it is pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
I did not bring a Word copy.
Okay, okay.
Do you need this stuff?
No, I'm, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. So, Tim, just tell us your modifications, please.
The guard rail, and is there a title of that diagram on sheet two?
Yes. Concrete stairs with handrails.
The guard rail shown on sheet two, concrete stairs with handrails, is to match fence in style exclusive of top spear. Handrails will be attached to guard rail by brackets without separate vertical posts.
And are they going to terminate in the post adjacent to the exterior? They are going to continue to terminate in a post adjacent to the exterior wall of the building.
Well, the...
That's the existing language.
Are we going through the existing language?
Mm-hmm.
Because if we are, the first condition, it says handrails shall be made black and made with historically appropriate materials and design as approved by the planning board. So we should revise that to say that it would, that that handrail will be what was submitted.
Specified in the attachment.
Specified in the...
Yeah.
Yep. And then number two is okay.
To one, I'm sorry. Handrail shall be black and...
Where it says, and made with historically appropriate materials and design, add the words...
But that, that isn't the material for the handrail.
This, this is the material.
That's the material for the fence.
Oh, I'm sorry, for the handrail.
The handrail is just going to look like this.
Yeah, that's the handrail.
Except for it's located by the staircase, in which case it'll have the pedestrian guard with an appearance similar to that.
Right.
The fence that's proposed, you're going to be able to attach guard rail to that fence?
Uh, no, it'll have to be something very similar. And it won't be for the accessible ramp. It would be just on this staircase platform.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that fence could support.
No, no, it'd have to be something close.
A handrail.
Well, I think we've specified what we want, and it seems to me that Brian can, we can move this thing with the conditions that we've specified. And Brian and Tim can write them up and attach them to our signatures.
That sounds super good to me.
And so I approve that we approve this site plan approval with those specifications.
My second.
Any discussion?
I would like to make a comment. I think that this is giving a bit of a rush to this when there's, there's some fair amount of detail that's still left outstanding. So I, for future reference, I would like to make sure that we treat all applications equitably. And if we're going to do this on this project, that we be considerate of that of other projects where we've asked for a certain amount of detail and we have multiple meetings on particular applications.
Well, we've specified the details and you can make sure that, tell Brian what, what they are, because there are no other outstanding details, as I understand it. If there were, I'd agree with you, but I don't think there are.
Cheryl, I'll make sure you see the language before it's signed.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We'll sign this two sheets, sign this tonight.
I think that we can sign them and give them to...
You'll all have a copy if I can just get through the signature pages.
Yep.
Give them to Tim to fold.
How many people are signing?
I don't have blue.
It's like Mike and Alex already started. Did you already start one? Okay. And don't date it, please. Or date it as of, not today's date, because we don't have the language.
Don't rip.
Okay. I keep forgetting to bring blue. I forget I have another one.
Okay. So we're going to, first of all, I'd like the Selectmen to, now that they're all formally at the table, we'd like to welcome you to our Planning Board meeting tonight and ask you to introduce yourselves.
Thank you. So we'll call to order. I'm Katie Conlin.
I'm Hurley.
And David Burges.
Great. And thank you for coming. So the purpose of the Selectmen joining us tonight is that we have several items that are before or could be before both of our boards, and we wanted to consolidate our opportunity to hear from the public with specific regard to the potential ice house development, as well as a discussion of master plan and an update there. We're going to start with the ice house development, through the number of people in the room for it. And one of our board members is going to recuse herself and will step out. That's Cheryl Taguayas. We'll come get you when we're ready. Yep, we're ready. Recognize Nick Corcoran. He is the representative for the Blue Hill Ice Potential Project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of both boards. I appreciate the, the fact that you're here. I'm going to stand. My voice tends to drop, and we have a big crowd. I want to make sure that people can hear me. So with your permission, I'll stand. I do have a PowerPoint overview, sort of a, back to the history of where we were last year. Yep. And then I want to recognize Keith Schleicher, who lives on the parkway, who put forward a, an online petition that garnered 530 signatures. We have mapped those signatures, and I have a map showing where those folks live. But, why don't you go to the next slide, Tim? I think this is a great opportunity for the town to begin or to re-began a dialogue about what we would like to see at the, at the Ice House property on the Blue Hills Parkway. Last February, Town Meeting sent the matter back to the Planning Board for further study. Since then, on behalf of the McKean family, and I am joined by Pat McKean and his brothers, Pat is here at the table. The McKean family actually grew up on the property. I've conducted eight meetings. Most of the people here in the room were at one or more of those meetings. Six were at the library over the course of the spring and the summer. I had two at the, at the police station, really sort of digging back into where do people feel about the idea, what else would they like to see? I think at the end of the day, the town has a choice. And I think if you oppose the notion of the, of the Ice House proposal as it's been presented, as we're presenting it on behalf of the McKeens, as it's presented in the draft of a bylaw that we've submitted, then I think you really need to think about what the alternatives are and why they make economic sense to the McKean family. It's a valuable property. They've received at least one significant offer for the property. It is not going to revert to its underlying zoning, single-family house lot. So if you have an alternative other than what's proposed, we need to hear that, because it has to make economic sense to the McKeens. Otherwise, we're going to ask Town Meeting to vote up or down on the, on the proposed bylaw. And if Town Meeting approves it, we'll move forward. If it doesn't, the McKeens will move forward with Plan B. Next, please. So I call it the hole in the donut. The yellow rectangle right there is the, is the Ice House property. It's midway on the, sort of the stretch of the parkway that's kind of wide open. There's, there's a line of single-family residents being 20,000 square foot homes that come to the south. There is a 98 unit home, Inc., across the street that has a single point of access onto and off of the parkway, the high school. And fairly thickly settled neighborhoods developed substantially before zoning was put in place. Probably 90% of those lots are non-conforming today with respect to zoning, the smaller and whatnot. It is an area that is not served by any real services and shopping. There's no access to food and other things. And one of the things we heard early on in discussions with folks about this project is, wouldn't it be great to have a food market and other amenities at this location? I heard that from a number of people who live proximate to here. In particular, Laura Cahill, who lives on Essex Street, right in that bullseye. Next. So closer up view, you can see a series of single families. The Monroe family, which is, lives next door, is fully supportive of the project. The McKeens and Ernest Monroe grew up next door to each other. They're friends. Ernest has been fully supportive since day one with respect to the project as proposed. Next. So for those who are not familiar with the property, as you look, as you look at it on the parkway, there is a large three-family dwelling, pre-existing, non-conforming, that used to be worker housing, going way back to when this was actually an ice business. It was founded in the 1870s by a guy named Pope, who grew up in Dorchester, served in the Union Army, was captured at the Battle of Gettysburg. When the Civil War was over, he came back. He settled in Milton. He partnered up with a guy named Turner, and the two of them formed the Blue Hill Ice Company. They fished ice out of the Pope's pond and Turner's pond for about 70 years. In the back is a, is a barn that served for the horses and the carriages and other equipment. On the front, there's a beautiful stand of trees, pines and oaks, I think. We proposed that those would remain as part of a development. I think they would disappear under any other circumstances. Next. Of an aerial, you've got the parkway on the right-hand side. This is the three family. This is the barn. There's an office structure here. There's an old remnant of one of the large ice houses. There were two large ice houses historically that sat here. Each was an acre in size. This is two acres. Imagine two buildings, each half the size of the lot, four stories each, where they stored ice and then shipped it into Boston and around the world. It's, I've done a little bit of history research. Ice went as far as Calcutta, India by ship. Somehow they figured out how to insulate it and use the ice itself to maintain itself. And given the triangle trade and the other trades, lots of stuff came to Boston. Nothing went the other way. They used ice as ballast for the trips back. And they figured out how to sell it to the Indies, Charleston, South Carolina, New Orleans, Louisiana, and as far away as India. Next. This is a, sort of a proposed alternative site plan. Basic idea... Several banks are interested in being a tenant, be financing the project. Important part of the project is the notion of protecting how the property presents itself to the Parkway, particularly with respect to those beautiful stand of trees and that green space. And then how does the property engage itself in the rear with the conservation land that surrounds it on two sides? All of the land here and south is owned under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. Idea is to really sort of clean up that rear and engage the conservation land. There is currently a trail that comes down from the neighborhoods to the west, crosses over the Pine Tree Brook, comes along and up here. We would propose to bring it in here and as part of the development. Next. This was a rendering that was done a year ago for that proposal. Again, smaller, the scale can be deceiving, but a bank, at the time, offices upstairs, market, other café, retail, offices upstairs. One of the things that we heard very clearly from some who were opposed to the project last year was that a mix of office—excuse me, of the retail with residential providing some affordability was an important thing. I thought about that. I had resisted that. We resisted that a year ago when we first came through, but Earl Fay and some others really convinced me that this was a better idea. I think the McKeens agree with that. The notion would be in the zoning that you would have two stories of residential, assume one to one and a half bedrooms per unit. 20% affordable is proposed as opposed to the standard 10% that you see in Milton zoning. And the idea would be that if you had up to 24 units on the second and third floor, you would provide affordability for young couples and young families before they move into houses with yards. So thinking younger couples, younger families. Next. Side by side of the site plan, you can see that this area in the rear really needs to be cleaned up. It would be proposed to be cleaned up. The bylaw does provide for 30% open space, most of which has to be usable and publicly accessible, at least during daylight hours. So you preserve the green space in front and the connection to the Parkway and you preserve the access to the rear. Next, Tim. And the side-by-side renderings. Next. So what does the proposed development plan do? Proposes a combination of uses that could have 10,000 square feet on the first floor replacing the barn. It could have 2,000 square feet of bank. It could have—it proposes to have residential or offices above the bank and it proposes two stories of residential above the office building. More likely that it would be all residential, but it's possible you'd see a mix. One of the proposals is that there would be a drive-through for the bank, which would be open 24 hours. That would need to be mitig—buffered for any impacts for residents upstairs. If there were offices upstairs, it would be mitigated by the fact that there was no one living above it. We had conversations early on with the Conservation Commission about the notion of meeting into the conservation land and we think that it has an opportunity to participate in the development of a Milton Brookwalk. Jeff Stone and others have this concept that if you connected trails from the far end of Pope's Pond down by Yulin Rink, you could come past here, follow the Brook as it flows through, past the Pierce Middle School to turn a pond and beyond Central Avenue down to the Central Avenue area, you'd have opportunities for shopping, coffee shops like at each end of that Brookwalk. It'd be a nice amenity for the town. It is particularly a walkable destination for people who live in the dense neighborhood to the west. So, next. So I know one of the big concerns is what happens to the Parkway. I can't speak for the Parkway. I have met three times with DCR. My understanding—DCR will speak for itself when it's appropriate. My understanding is that DCR will follow the zoning and changes to the Parkway as necessary will follow the zoning. That's my long experience as an official at Mass Highway, state government. Municipalities make decisions about zoning. State agencies follow, particularly with respect to how properties meet roadways and other facilities. One thing we know is that the property's gonna change and it's going to change substantially. The alternative is not gonna be a small, at least we're not going to zone for, a small residential development. It was suggested at one of the neighborhood meetings that I conducted earlier this summer that the minimum number of units you'd see there would be 80. I think more likely 100. If you think that 57 units was permitted down at Central Avenue for Jerry Conley on a three-quarter acre lot. This is two acres. I think you can do the math, but one of the priorities of this administration is to expand affordable housing opportunities. There are limited opportunities in Milton. This is an ideal location. It is approximately one mile by foot from the site to the Matapan Square train station. It is walking distance to all 13 grades in the Milton Public Schools. K through five at the Tucker, directly across the street from the high school and around the corner to the Pierce. It is ideally located for a dense, affordable housing alternative. That is the likely alternative. Either case will bring change to the Parkway. At a minimum, you're gonna have—you go—no, I guess this is it. At a minimum, you're going to have a safe crossing. If you have kids living on the property, walking across the street to the high school or the middle school, you're gonna need to create a handicapped, accessible crosswalk. That's crossing two lanes southbound, a wide median, and three lanes northbound. There's actually three lanes wide on the northbound side. So you will be cutting the median. You will be putting in traffic signals to control traffic from a pedestrian perspective. I think that's the minimum that would happen. Would other signalization be necessary? I don't know. I don't think so, but potentially. But one question would be whether it's trucks coming to and from simply to construct what's there or making deliveries to a development that occurs here, or people coming to shop or people who live there. Where do they want to turn to get off the Parkway to enter the property? If you're coming from the south, a lot of traffic comes from the south. Do you want to go beyond to Blue Hill Terror Street or those other turnarounds and cut back? Add that volume of traffic to those intersections? I'm not sure you want to do that. I think you can handle a left in and a left out. It may or may not be signaledized, but would provide that traffic flow. Those are details that would have to be worked out between the town, the developer, and DCR, but one way or the other, in my opinion, changes, at least some change to the Parkway is gonna happen. Next. How does this meet the goals of the master plan? This is an important consideration. One, it provides economic redevelopment of an underutilized site. This is a pre-existing, non-conforming use. It's historically pre-existing, non-conforming. Any change either requires a change in zoning or some other use that's authorized under law. I think it represents a beneficial reuse of a pre-existing, non-conforming property. It provides amenities for West Milton, that hole in the donut, market, retail, dining, a public meeting space, people—place for people to meet, people—place that you can walk to. It provides housing variety, including affordability for young couples. It improves the tax base with minimal impact on town services. It's a 24-hour living environment. People living upstairs will keep it safe from off-hour activity and activity downstairs will keep it safe because when there's a lot of activity, bad stuff generally doesn't And it will provide a new source of donor—donors for those of us who go around and hit the same people up all the time to fund PTO, everything else. It's a new set of potential donors that we can go after. It preserves and enhances in a historic streetscape. Parkway is historic. It is a beautiful asset. Its presentation to the property should be preserved and enhanced. We think this does that. And it promotes walkability, enhances connections to recreation facilities, including a possible Brookwalk, and would provide a safe crossing for people on both sides. Next. Okay. I have one other quick slide. Keith Schleicher, some of you know, put out a petition on Facebook and it was responded to by 530 people. I have copies of what I've done and as I've taken all of the names, matched them by address either on the town's nosy book or the tax assessor's rolls, and I have mapped those respondents who live west of Randolph Avenue and north of approximately Woodland, a little bit south of Canton Avenue. The next one I'll zero in on is a little closer. Doesn't include this precinct two and three signers and it doesn't include some of the people that are further south on Canton Avenue, but all of the names that are highlighted in yellow are names that match a red dot on that map. There are other names, a handful where we couldn't find an address. There are some from districts, from precincts six, seven, and eight that aren't on the map. They're not in the bullseye. They're not in the danger zone, so I left them off. I think one of the issues that we heard last year when we had a citizens' petitions, there were a lot of signatures from other parts of the town, we focused on this part of town. There is significant support.
How many on the Parkway?
Three along the Parkway to the south here. There are—
No more questions from the audience, please. If you have questions, we have to deal with it during this public comment.
So the site is right here. This is Home Inc. We went to a coffee at Home Inc. It was capacity. 98% of the people there were supportive, so I've etched them in. A couple of the names actually signed there and I know from Joe and Ann Murphy and others who live there that there is significant support within Home Inc. for this. Home Inc. is 98 units of over 62 housing. They don't show up as individual taxpayers because Home Inc. is a nonprofit that owns all of the units. People get on waiting lists and they can move in if they get access to a unit after age 62, but there is substantial support. So there is—Home Inc., there are three to the south who signed the petition and there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine on the Parkway who signed the petition. And Keith Schleicher, who formed the petition, is one of the—one on the Parkway who is closest to the Parkway. I think he's the closest, maybe the closest in this room to the property. Lives on the Parkway. So with that, I want to thank you for your time. I'm able to take, answer questions and our comments periodically as appropriate. At the end of the night, I'm gonna ask the selectmen to think about scheduling a special Town Meeting in February. I think I have enough support to get 200 signatures to call for a special Town Meeting. I'd rather not have to do that, but I think a February Town Meeting that's away from the annual Town Meeting would be an appropriate time for Town Meeting to have an opportunity to discuss and vote on this. Proposal gives time for the Planning Board and others to vet the concept, to think about the zoning, and we'll put it to the town. It's an important decision for the town. It's an important change for the town. You know, I've heard some people say, "We can't afford good development in Milton. It will fail and we'll end up with cigarettes and lottery tickets." It's a minority opinion, but it's there. I understand that. But 10 years ago, we said we didn't want any bars in Milton. Can't support a good restaurant. We're gonna end up with a bar and a saloon. We've got four great restaurants. I think we can trust ourselves to manage good development. This is good development. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I think I want to hear from staff. Staff, do you have anything you want to talk about?
Anybody?
No? Okay. Anything from the Planning Board?
I just have one comment about state agencies following local zoning. And I just want to clarify, so I know you worked for Mast out. I was the state permitting ombudsman. I have a different opinion about that. I don't think that just because we zone a parcel in a certain way automatically guarantees state agencies are going to issue permits however we want them, so I just wanted to lay that out there. I just disagree with the opinion. We'll figure that out during permitting if the zoning is successful, but I just want to make sure that is on the record.
Thanks, Mike. My conversations with them tended to follow the notion of if you zone it, it will whatever comes.
Alex.
As I understand it, most people want a market. This zoning doesn't say how much market you would get if this zoning has. Might be 200 square feet, it might be 20,000 square feet. There needs to be a minimum size of the market in the zoning and I would suggest 15,000 square feet is a correct number for a market that isn't simply a convenience store. I would also point out that this zoning doesn't specify how much building you can put on this lot. The only thing that would limit the amount of building is the number of parking spaces and I would suggest that there needs to be a total amount of floor space specified in the zoning. I think that adding—last fall, when we discussed this commercial development, there were a number of issues, but no one brought up the issue of adding housing. Adding housing, in my view, makes this development far too dense. You can't put two floors of housing on top of a big market and end up with anything but an urban, an urban-type situation. It's just not possible. This is two acres. This is a two-acre lot, the size of a single house lot in the double A zone. To put 24 houses or apartments plus a market, plus a bank, plus possibly offices, it just is too much. I don't—you know, the concept of having a market and of having the market of have the sort of facility where people can come in and sit down and communicate with each other is a great concept, but there's this zoning doesn't guarantee anything.
Can I make a comment?
Okay, Mike, do you want anything?
My only concern is the change to the Parkway. Like, I guess what Ned was referring to and April clarified is they might not allow traffic signals and I think a traffic— I don't think that a traffic signal there would be a benefit, but that's the biggest concern I have is what it does to the traffic flow and the—
each other is a great concept, but there's a zoning doesn't guarantee anything.
Can I make a comment?
Okay, minute. Mike, do you want anything?
My only concern is that the change to the Parkway had, like, I guess what Ned was referring to and April clarified is they might not allow traffic signals and I think a traffic sig, I don't think that a traffic signal there would be a benefit, but that's the biggest concern I have is what it does to the traffic flow in the Parkway.
April?
Being very disagreeable tonight. Alex, I disagree with you. I think the addition of housing, particularly two stories of housing, really improves the value of what the commercial tenants could be, and I think really improves the design of the project. But that's all I want to say. I really want to hear from the neighborhood and what the neighborhood wants.
Okay. I have a question. This plan is showing a number of parking spaces. And actually, before I go to my question, you know, general comment is that we're not really approving, sort of echoing what Alex is saying, we're not really approving a plan here tonight. We're really approving a zoning bylaw from which someone is going to design a plan. So I'm going to ask a question now about parking. Yes, Mr. Swinburne?
We wouldn't even be approving a zoning bylaw. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's a very good point. We would be discussing a zoning bylaw. Thank you. That's a very good point. Thank you for that clarification. So I'm going to ask a question about how many parking spaces you're showing on the plan, but obviously, it's a, it's a theoretical plan. But under this, under this scenario, how many parking spaces are you showing up here? I was trying to count, but I was having a hard time doing it.
I think that, that, that plan, which was designed for a 10,000-square-foot building and a 2,000-square-foot building with offices on top, had 70-some parking spaces. There are two major constraints to which you can put on there. One is 30% open space as a minimum requirement, and two is parking for, for parking spaces per 1,000 square feet with a potential for parking sharing if you can think about overnight use as opposed to daytime use. So there would have to be a reasonable allocation of parking spaces to be shared if you were to do something like this. I think that is limiting. I'd love to get a 15,000-square-foot market because that would be a Trader Joe's, and that would be a home run. And you wouldn't get anything else on the site because it would chew up the entire site. I don't think, I think that's, that's too big for the site. So I think a market that is 6,000 square feet, if the, if the first floor of the main building is 10,000 to 12,000 square feet, half of that is six-plus, you're probably getting a, a market that's equivalent in size to the Fruit Center itself. And the notion would be something like the Fruit Center with a meat market, with a fish market.
Okay. So that's all, I mean, that's hypothetical. Again, it's a hypothetical plan. All I, so all I'm going to say is, I'm going to agree with, with both April and Alex and be really completely bipartisan right now. You know, I love the residential component. I love the idea of the mixed juice. But I do think that what's being shown up on the wall, or at least as it's being discussed, you know, 10,000 square foot of retail in the form of a market, 2,000 square foot bands, that's 12,000 square feet of, of retail. I don't believe four spaces per thousand, especially with a grocer, is enough. So I think you're at least five per thousand, which gets you to 60 parking spaces. And now you add 22 units onto that and roughly 22,000 square feet of residential, that's, that's 99 parking spaces if you use one and a half per thousand. So I do think that the zoning is going to need to be written in a way that we are able to govern how much we put in this two-acre bag. Because, you know, throwing a drive-through, you now lose 15 parking spaces. So however the zoning gets written, it needs to be done in a way that we're, that we're governed by, you know, more than sort of a four-per-thousand parking ratio and, and a 30% open space. There has to be some real basis in reality to what's going to work here, because the last thing I think anybody in this room wants is a site that doesn't even work, that, that no retailer is going to occupy because there's not enough parking on the site. So I think as we're thinking about this, as the selectmen are thinking about this, as the people in the room are thinking about this, let's think about the re, the realistic requirements that should be in this zoning so that when the developer does come along, they're able to dr, design a plan that works based on the zoning that, that they have in front of them. That's my comment. Anything from the selectmen before we go to the public?
Well, I, I think timing might be a real issue for us, that we should talk about probably after. I, I, one member of the board, I want to hear from the, the people who are here tonight. I'm sure my colleagues do as well, but Ned, we, we heard your request at the beginning, and timing may well be an issue here, just with the, the extra space that's needed for a special town meeting. Warrants need to be in the homes 14 days before the meeting, and we, we did have a draft timeline that was written up, and the, the deadlines are pretty tight.
Well, number one, they're tight. Number two, generally, it's difficult to hold a town meeting with just one article on it. I mean, it's not impossible, but yeah, I mean, if you fear quorums and everything else, just one article. And I don't think there's any other articles talked about that are ready to come forward. If there were any, there'd be planning articles.
We don't have any other ones, really.
Yeah, I think the question would be really, is, is very, very end of February materially different to the, to this process and a potential project than first week in May. In terms of the warrant committee's timeline, they're going to be pretty deep into the budget in February and March. And Tom raises a good point about a town meeting for a single article. It's possible there could be others that come forward once you announce a town meeting date, but that, that's just something for us to keep in mind, but...
I also just want to, you know, to that end, this is a planning article, even if it comes in as a citizen's petition. Generally speaking, it's a planning article. There's going to be some desire by the town meeting to hear from what the planning board has to say about it. If we have to have a, a baked warrant ready sometime in December, we have a fair amount of business in front of us right now, and I don't know how we get there. And I don't see us being able to put another special meeting on the agenda just based on how hard it was to put this one on the agenda. So we're happy to discuss it, but I think the timing is tight. Yeah, it's going to be very, very challenging.
I'm fine with all of that. My concern about getting to May is that May's annual town meeting, and that's a big deal. And so it might be difficult to have a May town meeting, but you're right. It's a, it, there's more time for a deliberative process leading up to May, and we're happy to do May if that's something that's more appropriate to, to that. We'll see how the, where the support is. I think there's enough support to want to go forward, and I think town meeting wants to have an opportunity to vote on this. I think they, they didn't get the opportunity last February. I think they would like to get the opportunity.
I guess, in, in terms of the concept, I, I think it, it does tick off an awful lot of things that were on the, the master plan and things that I heard over and over again, especially from, from the west side of Milton. I live on the west side of Milton, and really, there, there is no retailer. I mean, literally, if you want to go to a food market, unless you want to go, you know, to Stop &amp; Shop in High Park, it's, it's, it's a half-hour drive. It's not a pleasurable drive either. So I think, I, I think it does provide those things that, that again, were said over and over again in those master plan meetings.
So from my perspective, you know, I will take a step back from, you know, about a year and a half ago when I ran for this position. I did a lot of forums around town and did some forums in those neighborhoods. And in that neighborhood, I continually heard the need to have a cafe, the need to have access to shopping, the need to have some of these ideals. And that's great. Generally, though, it's usually not next to me, and I think that's, that's typically the way it's been in Milton. With that being said, though, I, I think that there needs to be a greater need for transparency in this project. I think that, you know, I commend Ned for, for having the community meetings, but I think the neighborhood needs, they deserve an opportunity to get as much information as possible all the time. I will be honest, I was very discouraged to find out that we had two town employees join you, Ned, at a DCR meeting. I was unaware of that. My board member, fellow members were unaware of that, nor was the town administrator. I don't know what was said in that meeting. I don't know why they attended. I can understand why you would on behalf of your, your client. I think these are the things that we need to be transparent about, and I think that that's what, what government's supposed to do for us, and I think the neighborhood deserves that. I think that it looks like a great project. It looks like something that could be really good for the town, but I think these are the unanswered questions that need to be kind of vetted as we move forward.
Okay. Well, now it's the moment everybody's been waiting for. We're going to jump to the public now. We're going to start with Ms. McSweeney. We're going to try to keep our comments to three minutes, to the extent possible. We're going to hopefully reiterate support from other people's comments when possible. We're going to address your comments to the board as opposed to the applicant. If there are questions, we will keep track of them, and we will try to answer them at the end rather than have a dialogue back and forth now. Thank you. You're on.
Okay, I'll start again.
Oh, one moment, one moment. We just need to give you a microphone, that's all. Make sure we have a mic. Yeah, perfect.
Can you give me now?
Yes, thank you.
I come before you again to express my concerns about going forward to change the zoning at the Ice House property to accommodate this mixed residential and commercial development. I have lived on the Parkway for the greater part of my life. The house I live in was built by my grandfather. He chose to come here almost 100 years ago, out of Boston, because of the beauty of the Parkway and its closeness to the Blue Hill Reservation. He trusted that this beauty would be maintained and improved upon. Changing the zoning for commercial development at this location does not support this trust. The proposed alterations and loss of public lands on the, on Milton's historic Parkway will only compromise and diminish the recreational uses by pedestrians and bicyclists. Any development should be in alignment with DCR's historic Parkway preservation treatment guidelines. The project as submitted still needs clarification in many areas. It is certainly out of scale for this property that is less than two acres. In the proposal, they talk about professional studies calculating the impacts of the development on the town services, parking, and on the traffic in the town. The development will not only increase the number of cars using this area, but also increase the trucks using the Parkway and surrounding streets to service this shopping area. The Parkway already sees its fair share of traffic, starting as early as 4:00 in the morning and extending into the evening hours. I wonder whether this will ensure the safety of our schoolchildren who cross and walk the Parkway daily. What will happen in future years with this marketplace? The marketplace may very well change along with the selection of stores. Is it possible now with the change in the state law concerning marijuana that a dispensary could be designated here? I understand the appeal to many Miltonites for this development, as evidenced by the I was surprised to see, and I reviewed over 200 of the people that signed and where they lived. I could only find one that stated that they lived on the Parkway. It is important that the board not proceed with changing the zoning on this property. Milton will lose greatly in changing this historic Parkway. We should work with DCR to improve its beauty. It's a gem in its own right and should be valued as such. It is a gateway to our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
I come before the board again to wish my support for the Ice House development. My name is Keith Schleicher. I live at 376 Blue Hills Parkway, which is just about diagonal from the property. I heard some comments tonight that were a little bit unnerving for me. The word urban, if you wanted to define that later on, you could. It was, from what, what I started, when I did this petition, I was hoping maybe 100 people will sign it. 100 people signed it in a week. Then there was 200 people that signed it. Then 300, then 400, then 500. Now we're up to 530. If you want me to get 1,000 signatures, I'll get 1,000 signatures for you. If you want 2,000, I'll go out there, I'll go door-to-door and get those signatures. You want comments from people? I could sit here for three minutes and read those comments. People in my neighborhood and people across Milton want this development. They really, really want this development. Both my neighbors want it. They didn't sign the petition yet, but that's two more people on the Parkway directly across the street. We want this, we need this. It would be great for everybody. It's going to make the town look better. It could do great wonders for that street. I have kids that walk to Tucker, the kids that walk to Pierce. Eventually, they'll go to the high school. It would be amazing to have a place where they could go after high school, walk down there, and congregate and hang out. This could really be a big thing for Milton, and I hope that people can stop making Milton being a town of saying no and open up and say, "Yes, people want this. Let's get this." Thank you.
I have this woman right here. I'm going to do my best to go in order.
Hi, my name's Marilyn Whipple, 52 Crown Street. Crown Street is in that dense neighborhood that was pointed out. I'm fully in support of this plan, as is my whole family and many of our neighbors. I know we, we signed the petition. I have one question, which I guess you can answer later, but on the residential part, I just didn't get if that was apartments or condos, so if you can address that afterwards, it's not critical to my, my comment. I think that, I've been living in my home for 22 years. We chose that neighborhood because of its density, because of its diversity. It was interesting to hear that it's non-conforming and that neighborhood would never be built now, and that would be sad. What we have is a really incredible community in that dense neighborhood. Several of my neighbors and former neighbors are, are here tonight in support of the plan. We felt, I think for many years, left out of the ability to, to gather, the ability to, for convenient shopping, the ability to walk to a place where we'll see neighbors. I remember last year that one of the ideas was, oh, maybe there's a seasonal ice cream shop. Thought that was really cool. But that's, the general idea is that we want a place to go. We want a place to continue to build this incredible neighborhood that we have, and we don't want to feel left out. We don't want to feel like second-class citizens. I would also say that I, I certainly respect the beauty of, of the Parkway. I'm an avid cyclist. I bike all the time, and I hike a lot. None of that, I, I think, would change. We also need to recognize that we are very, very close to Boston. I love the fact that you can walk to Mattapan, and I do so frequently to commute to my job. We are not one of the far-out suburbs with acres and acres of land in, in a rural community. We have the benefit of a mix of urban and suburban, and I think that this would enhance that greatly. I also actually think, and this is not a primary motivation for me, I've been in my house for a long time, property value has already gone up since I bought it because I've been there. I actually think that this would benefit property values of neighbors because people would look to this area and say, "This is cool. My kids can walk to school." And by the way, my two kids walked to all three schools, and I, and it's a value add for me to live in a neighborhood with these great conveniences. Thank you.
Thank you. Man in the white sweater? Oops, sorry. I guess we'll...
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead. We'll get you, we'll get the white, woman in the white sweater next. Thank you.
Okay. Hi.
Hi.
So I live on Parkway and am the mother of two little kids.
Name and address, please.
Renian Gordon, 553 Blue Hills Parkway. So I am totally up for the commercial development of the, the park because I feel for this whole neighborhood, we truly need something that we could go to, like, say, buy some milk and save families a lot of time. You know, you don't have to drive long, long ways to go. I think a lot of people are okay with that part, but I'm not a big fan of the residential part. I feel as, um, Milton's already crowded at this moment. I mean, we ran into a huge problem with the public school buses this year because it was overcrowded. Everybody probably already know. And I don't think on the Parkway in such a small area, we want to stack in 20, 30, 40 more units over there. And there's a few reasons. First, it's going to add a lot of burden to the town. I mean, when we consider about the property, we think about the tax income we're going to get, but then the town has to put in a lot of resource to serve the actual households over there. And I assume a lot of people who actually come to the town would be for the school system. There'd be a lot of little kids over there. And that's the first thing. Second thing is, you have a commercial development downstairs. I assume there's going to be a lot of patrols, a lot of traffic going on, and you would have people upstairs for, with the little kids. What do you want to do after 3:00 in the, in the afternoon? Can the kids go outside the market to play safely? I don't think the parents would feel good about it, and I don't feel good about it. And, and the street, like, you know, there's going to be tons of traffic on the street. Where can they go? So I, I think, I don't know, when we actually put the residential part, I don't know if people think about this part. You have a commercial side, you have the little kids that live upstairs. What are we going to deal with, that situation? As a mother of two, I don't like that idea. When I was signing the petition, I think a lot of people say, "Oh, there are tons of people signed a petition." When I was signing a petition, I feel I was misled with information. I was giving the link to the commercial development. There was no, there was no, nowhere mentioned the residential part. And if that's the part, and I would like to withdraw my petition support from that part. I only support the commercial part because I... I only support the commercial part, because I think the neighborhood needs it. And everybody, actually, I was talking to, say, we definitely want something similar to East Milton, the food market, or the related, like, services, but we don't want more houses over there. And I, I think a lot of people don't like the idea. That's the reason I come over here today, and I said, I was misled with that part. I'm sorry, whoever, like, you know, gave me the link, but I wasn't told that was a residential part involved, too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm Linda Palmer. I live on Blue Hill Terrace, Precinct 1, and I'm here to oppose the change in the zoning. I think some of what you're hearing tonight is that the many people who have apparently clicked on Facebook don't understand what is being proposed. I think the picture that you saw tonight is not what is now being proposed. It has changed substantially over the time that I've been going to meetings. So, I don't understand what, what the proposal is as of today, and it's a moving target. So, I caution you very strongly about giving an open door to this development. Living on Blue Hill Terrace, I walk on the Parkway at least twice a day. I think that a stoplight is not a traffic calming measure. In fact, it makes it worse. You get a rush of cars coming and have to stand for quite some time before you can actually get across the street, and that's four lanes, at least, sometimes five. And I find it very difficult, especially when I'm walking my dog, who does not understand the concept of traffic. We have been through this before, this all-or-nothing proposal. Either you approve this, or we give you 40B. I don't understand that, and I don't like it. This project has several people I mentioned. A butts a historic Parkway and a sensitive conservation area. Both of those things were of great value to my husband, Tom, and I when we moved here 28 years ago and remain important to us now. And rather than damaging either of those by this overbuilding on the site, I would ask you not to ask to approve the zoning. I know you're not, I know you're not being asked to approve it this evening, but... And I would, I would also caution you that the many people who may have clicked on that petition, as you heard from the last woman, also don't know what they're supporting. Is this commercial? Is it residential? Is it a cut on the Parkway? Is it, what is it that we're approving? I don't feel neglected on my street. I get plenty of traffic as it is. And I don't, I can drive to stop and shop in a lot less than half an hour. I don't know how you drive, but...
I just don't want to go to stop and shop.
Yeah. We have a, we do have a market. It's called Tedeschi's, and it's open many hours a day. So, speaking as someone who lives near this development, that's my opinion. I thank you for your time.
Actually, he's next, and then I'll go to the woman in the flower shirt. So, you were next, yes?
I'm not going to repeat much of what's been said. I was set to do that, but... My name is Joe Medunio, and I live on the Parkway 20 years now. And, you know, I wrote a piece, you probably saw it in the Milton Times, and I also wrote a letter to Commissioner Roy that I sent to a number of you, and I spoke with Patrice Kish a few weeks ago about that meeting and about some other things related to the Parkway. You know, I have everything to gain by this. I want to make that clear. I'm not in a butter. I'm well aware of what this might add, the convenience, the community. I'm really big on all of that stuff. You know, I love to hang around cafes with laptops and stuff like this myself. Currently, I go to, you know, Lower Mills or Boston or Cambridge or some other place. I've been going back and forth on this about, you know, the concept of it versus the site-specific realities of implementing this. Very, very concerned with traffic, and this is a traffic-drawing thing, no matter how you cut it. I know people can walk, and I could walk, and some of my neighbors could walk, but most people are going to be coming and going in cars from, what, 8:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night, and that's going to increase traffic. It's going to create problems in a very quiet end of the street that's currently almost a little rural-like in some ways. What we're, what we're asking you to do here, and I just think people, you know, in the audience keep, they need to understand, it's kind of precedent-setting, too. This does open up other doors for other nonconforming properties. We're changing from zoning from residential to commercial. I don't believe that's ever been done in Milton. So, it is a big deal, and, you know, everyone needs to be patient and thoughtful and respectful of everyone's opinions. We all want the best for the town. You know, I'm wondering if at some point, I mean, you know, we really need to kind of find some compromises here that will work. I mean, I think what Alex said about the scaling of it, I had the same concerns that this lady, and I forget her name, just spoke. You know, how is this mix of residential on top of a market going to go over? You know, I sat in the parking lot the other day down at East Milton Square, and I was kind of horrified, thinking, we're going to bring this to the Parkway where I live now? You know, I go there all the time, the fruit center, and I was trying to imagine housing on top of the fruit center, you know, with kids, with families coming and going. I'm saying, how is that going to work? I mean, I was saying, this either needs to be totally commercial or totally residential, I think. I don't get, I mean, I understand how that mixed-use thing works, and it can work well in other locations, but this is, this is a site off by itself. It's not in the city. It's not on the periphery, the edge of an urban area, a kind of busy place like we see up in Dorchester and some of those places. I'm saying, sitting here against all this conservation land, gateway to the Blue Hills, quiet spot, you're going to have this mixed, these mixed units, people trying to come and go with cars. Think of the winter, too, you know? I was even wondering if the people from Home, Inc., realize that they may not even be able to access this place, because there's probably going to be a line of traffic in front of their driveway when they try to get out there, because the light's going to be there. So, I mean, we're thinking, you know, those of us who have been cautious and against this, we're not trying to be negative or, you know, you know, kind of crush other people's ideas and dreams. We share some of those ourselves. We really, we're thinking of the little details and the unintended consequences and all these more traffic-related and logistic impacts. I'm very concerned with the historic Parkway. I am. I think it's a gem and it should be upgraded, and, you know, we started a Friends of the Blue Hills Parkway group with the intention of taking on a number of issues in the years ahead, because it is one of the last parkways that hasn't been affected by this kind of thing. I sit on my front deck all the time, bikers going up there all the time. I'm wondering how this is going to affect, you know, recreation on the Parkway, when you've got people exiting, coming and going all day long to this market, which I'm assuming will be successful and will be drawing crowds like we see at East Milton Square in that parking lot down there, which I think people need to kind of get that picture in their head a bit. I mean, this will be designed more nicely. It's going to look better. But, I mean, I think people who are signing that petition, I don't believe, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think they're signing on to a bank. A 24-hour ATM at a bank. I mean, I don't think that's a great idea on the Parkway. Summer nights, people coming and going, going to the ATM. I don't know. I think many of them are looking, and I get this. They're looking for a place to have community, coffee, to meet up, to hang out. You know, I think if we scale it down, maybe go with more like, you know, Ned was asking me. We put in, you know, one-bedroom condos, studios, apartments, you know, kind of entry level for young professionals, some empty nesters, and maybe we could have an ancillary building. Maybe that old house could be refurbished. An atrium could be added, some outdoor areas, and that could become the so-called bench-like cafe, soup shop, sandwich shop kind of thing, where people can go. Maybe you can fit in a few organics. The whole idea of a market, a full-size market, to me, I think it's going to bring trucks. It's going to bring all kinds of dumpsters. It raises a lot of problems that a smaller meeting, hangout, cafe kind of lunch place might have. I wouldn't be supportive of anything going on there in the evening. I think it might be too much. It is only two acres. I've walked around there. I've looked at it. I've taken pictures, and I keep, I'm dumbfounded. I'm like, I don't know how we're going to fit all this stuff in here and manage to maintain some sense of beauty and a little peace and quiet down there. I think we're creating a new business district, and I think we've got to kind of look at it that way, or kind of a shopping center business district in an area that's traditionally residential and quiet. So, it has consequences. I think we should think them through. We don't want to ruin this town. I moved to this town from Lynn for the very thing that several people already said here. Because of the Parkway, because of Pope's Pond, because of the hiking trails, biking trails. I'm a runner, canoeist, a hiker. So, I was, I, that was all part of why I bought that place, this house, with the, with the belief that it wasn't going to change, that it was residential, so...
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
240, 246, 240.
Yeah, I know. I apologize.
I'm sorry.
Woman in the flower shirt, please.
My name is Margaret Carles. I live at 19 Gibbons Street, Precinct 4. I'm a town meeting member. We've been there 17 years. I've also been heavily involved in the Pine Tree Brook Neighborhood Association. We do a Brook cleanup every year in the spring. We, we also have a block party every year in the fall, very active, wonderful neighborhood. About, probably about 10 years ago, they improved the path that runs along the Brook. This is down from the high school, runs along the Brook from the end of my street, a couple of streets up, all the way, goes across the Parkway, goes all the way to Pope's Pond. From my house, it would be about a five-minute walk to the Ice House Development, and there are hundreds and hundreds of people who live around me. There was some pushback to the improvements that they made along the Brook, along the path, from neighbors who said, this is going to bring more traffic, foot traffic, and more litter, and we don't want that. It did bring more foot traffic. Bikers, walkers, people walking their dog, kids walking to school. It did not bring more litter. Our Brook cleanups went from four hours to an hour. We know. We pick up the trash there. It brought people who care about the area to the area. They love it. And I think that leaves no room for people who want to do negative things, because their eyes are out. I am very much in favor of this change to the bylaw. I know it's a complicated process that you all have to go through, and I, I'm so glad that you guys are doing it, because I find it very hard to follow. I think what, I don't want to repeat what people have said, but I think what we need to remember is the McKeens have, it's their property. They are going to do something with it. I don't understand the people that think that the 40B is a threat that are just forcing people's hands. The McKeens, if it was my property, I'd want to get as much money as I could out of it, you know? Maybe if I was wealthy, I could donate it to the town or something. It can be perfect green space, but that's not going to happen. So, it's not, it's not just the people that want the change and the people that don't want the change. It's their property. They have to do something with it. I do believe it'll raise our property values. I think it will help the commercial tax base, however little, but, you know, I've been in town meeting for years. This is what we always talk about. We got to make a dent. I'm happy with adding some affordable housing. It's definitely a problem that we need to face. And I have two girls, both who'll be in high school very soon, and it'd be a great place for them to work, so I think that's a great thing. I, I hear the concerns that people have, and I think that we have some terrifically smart people in this town, and we can address them, and I look forward to being a part of that, so thank you very much.
Thank you. In the back, purple shirt. Going by clothing tonight. Thank you all for being very colorful. It's very helpful.
Hello, Earl Fay, 45 Annapolis Road, and I'm a Precinct 1 Town Meeting Member. When this came before the town, I was pretty strongly opposed to the article at that point, and I think the opposition caught a lot of folks off guard. I'm now in favor of the project, and there's a few reasons that I, and I think that's important to note. I'm not on the online petition. I believe in telling you face-to-face how I feel. I don't take a lot of stock in an online petition, one way or the other. There'll be a against-online petition pretty soon, I imagine. The housing's the main reason that's turned me around on it. If you have people who live there, they have a vested interest in the maintenance of that property. People aren't going to live there if it becomes something undesirable, and so that's really important. There's 24-hour oversight of the property to some extent, okay? And I think that's a very big difference. No one's going to move there with small kids if they're worried about the parking lot. That's sort of common sense, right? So, if someone's worried about kids running around the parking lot, they know before they move there that there's a market and there might be a parking lot there. So, I'm not, I'm not terribly concerned about that. Affordable units, absolutely critical, okay? We've missed the boat too many times. When I've asked for one unit here, one unit there, and we've been told no. We've put, what, $10,000 over the last two years into the, into the trust. I'm not, that, I'm really disappointed in that, to say the least. We would need 50 units of property somewhere else to gain, you know, five, and we're talking about 20 or so. Micro-units are the way, you know, we're going. Another improvement here is when we talked about the project from a traffic standpoint last year, there wasn't the concept of cutting through the median at all. That was actually opposed at that time, if I remember it correctly. And so, my concern was, well, how are you going to make that turn? You're going to go way up, and then you're going to take a U-turn here and a U-turn there. And it didn't make any sense to me. So, the common sense, whether it's a light or not, that's up. But the common sense point of putting a turn into there makes it much more feasible. And I want to keep my comments real concise with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Go with the woman there standing up against the wall?
I'm Linda Farwell, Audubon Road, so I guess that's Precinct 1. I'm not going to repeat anything. Four, four? Oh, sorry. I live one house off the Parkway, and I am fully in support of it. And, so I don't want to repeat comments, but I'm actively involved in the Pine Tree Brook Association, and I think it would be a great addition to our neighborhood. And I think I'd rather hear trucks entering than the motorcycles racing down the street.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll, oh, sorry, just one thing. I think, I think people should definitely be aware that if it doesn't, it will get built up, and it will get built up denser, probably, if it doesn't become a mixed use. Thank you.
Ma'am in the, same, yeah, same location on the wall there.
Hi, my name is Deborah Milbauer, and I live at 16 Winthrop Street, and I'm a Town Meeting Member in Precinct 4. And I'm also with Linda and Margaret, very involved in the Pine Tree Brook Neighborhood Association. And I am so excited if, about this development. I think that you all have expertise and will scale it and zone it and be really careful about it, and that's so, I sort of trust this process, because I understand people's concern around scale, but I'm so excited about this process, I mean, about this project. And I love the idea of mixed use. It's smart growth, and I love the idea of possibly some affordable housing. I think that's great, too. My one concern is, I would ask that the development along the pond be very limited and discreet as much as possible and keep as much trees and growth as absolutely possible, because I run around, I jog around the pond on the other side, and it's absolutely one of my most absolute favorite places in all of Milton. So, I like the idea of benches and maybe creating the path on the other side, but I want it to have the smallest, most discreet impact possible. And if it can have a small, discreet impact, then I would say, don't put the path on that side. Anyway, I think it's fantastic. I trust you all to do it to scale and appropriately and with all the considerations and legitimate concerns that people brought up, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Front row.
Erin Hardy, 155 Robbins Street. Three really quick comments, but before I say those, I just wanted to put out a counter-narrative to a little bit of an emerging narrative that's coming out tonight about all the proponents being hopers and dreamers who are not educated about the complexities of the process. I don't think anyone on the citizen's side understands all the intricacies, of course, the way that you all do. I appreciate what was just said. We have really smart people to do this right, but I kind of want to clamp down the idea that all the proponents are uneducated or idealistic or unrealistic about some of the potential negative consequences to come out of that. I think there are a lot of very thoughtful proponents. And also, to the transparency piece on the citizen's side, I think it's very eagle, very easy to Google Ned Coggin Ice easy to Google Ned Coggrin Ice House proposal and see everything that you talked about tonight, at least at a high level. So three quick comments I wanted to make in support of the appropriate rezoning, to support a plan, as was discussed tonight, based on sort of three different hats. I wear one, in, I'm a neighborhood resident that has come from an urban neighborhood, and I think realistically, I know a lot of my neighbors have come from Cambridge and Jamaica Plain, and Dorchester and South Boston and West Roxbury, and they lived in very walkable neighborhoods, and they traded off to come to Milton for all the other attributes of Milton, but kind of gave up that walkability factor, and I think that there's a lot of preference for that walkability dimension for people that are coming into the neighborhood, and I think that needs to be acknowledged. This obviously would enhance walkability. Second hat is as a parent of young children. Again, there's been tons of turnover in our little pocket of this neighborhood, lots of young families moving into the neighborhood, and it's just part of, I think, the sort of parenting MO these days, to go out on foot, stroller, bike, but it would be nice that in addition to sort of being ships passing in the night on the street, being able to have a destination to go to, and I think the lack of accessible green space that's communal on our side of town is a, is a major equity issue for our kids and our families on this side of town. I don't have to say, you know, everything that we all know as parents about the importance of the ability to be outdoors, be in green space, like the importance of that for our children's health and well-being, and access to that sort of resource is not equitable throughout the town. This obviously gives us an opportunity to, to make that more accessible on this side of town. And then finally, the third hat is just as a community member, I hear, we've heard a lot tonight, who takes a lot of pride in living in a neighborhood that is inclusive and proud of its diversity, and so I just find the fact that the affordable housing piece, and the housing piece in general, is even in the mix, whether it comes to fruition, whether, you know, we can figure out how to do it well. The fact that it's even in the conversation is a very visible message, I think, of our neighborhood and our broader community's values and priorities, and I really appreciate that.
Sir.
I'll try to brief. You heard from my wife earlier, my name's Tom Palmer, I live on Little Terrace Street, town meeting, member precinct one. I did read the new zoning. I heard Ned say earlier that the green space on the parkway will be preserved, it's not what the zoning says. I said at town meeting, why not preserve the two, the largest trees on the parkway, three white pines, I think three red oaks? The zoning says, it could say we will preserve them, it says, we'll keep them if we can. For me, the issue about commercial development here is the traffic lights. I think it will require traffic lights to make the commercial development a success, and I think the traffic lights are going to be a detriment to the parkway. They've been described as traffic calming. I think, in fact, they're traffic stopping when they turn red, and if you are biking or walking in the parkway, either in the median or the sidewalks, you stop too, and you listen to the cars go wah-wah-wah-wah, and that's not what it's like now. Now it's green all the way down. Standing, Fred, you're standing in front of an old photo of the parkway, that's, I think, from eighteen nineties. You notice there are no traffic lights or commercial developments on the parkway. It's been appreciated in this town a long time for what it is. As far as redeveloping the parcel, I think the owner is asking for a gift, basically, rezoning that will make the property more valuable. There's no problem with giving this gift if we think we get something too, but I don't appreciate being told that you, we must give this gift or we get the booby prize. And I've heard that before. I heard that at the Temple redevelopment, we were threatened. I think dense residential is not necessarily a bad idea, I think residential maybe might not need a traffic light. I like that idea. I like the idea of residential and commercial with little enough commercials so you don't have to break up the parkway with a median cut and traffic light. I think I would be all right with that. That's not what the zoning says. The zoning, to me, requires a traffic light, and I don't want to see that on the parkway. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Kevin Hardy, a town meeting member, precinct one. I live on one fifty-five Robbins. I guess, I've submitted a letter to all you, so you know that I'm strongly in favor of this, the rezoning, but I think one thing I want to just state is that I'm actually kind of encouraged, because when I hear from, I wrote an article in the Milton Times, Joe wrote an article in the Milton Times, it sounds like we're not that far off on things. And so I think the idea that we're putting forth a, a bylaw, and if we get that right, we do have the planning board, and we have good input from neighbors to get the right, the right size and the right scale, so.
Sir in the back.
Am I going to call my blue shirt? I was calling.
Sorry about that, yeah. Getting late. You blended with the wall.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Patrick Manning. I live at sixty-nine Audubon, proudly voted for precinct four, also a member of the Pine Tree Neighborhood and Brook Association. Been in Milton since two thousand and five, two young daughters, one's at the Tucker, who likes to walk to school, and one is at the Pierce, ready to be the next female president of the United States. I am in full favor of this project. I know there's a lot that we need to figure out. As far as the parkway, you may have seen me rollerblading five nights a week down the middle of the parkway. I do exercise on there, and I also do walk my dog there several nights a week. I do believe a traffic light will help. As Ms. Farwell said, we do hear motorcycles screaming by at seventy miles an hour, and the only detriment to having a traffic light would be the State Trooper that's going to lose his detail pulling twenty cars over every night for speeding. We've all seen him kind of laughing at people because he's there almost every day. As far as the, the building itself, I'm tired of wasting an hour and a half to go to East Milton Square to get a five-pound, five-pound bag of potatoes out of the food mart and the traffic concerns over there. I believe the conservation land, Pope's Pond, as Ms. Milbauer said, is a beautiful place, and it would kind of be nice to incorporate that into the design as little as possible. I think it's a very valuable resource to that neighborhood. And also, we have, I don't like to be called West Milton. We don't have, I grew up in South Boston, I still don't like that term of West Milton. We all have a Milton address, so as far as people saying West Milton, but I believe this side of Milton, we need services. I personally food shop in Brockton at the Market Basket down on twenty-four. I avoid the Stop &amp; Shop in Hyde Park because it's an awful store, and I'm just, would trust all of you, I, I believe this could be a big thing for this part of Milton. We have no kind of hangout for gathering. Bike riders can stop and, and get a cup of coffee in the morning. People who go to the Yulin Rink can stop on the way. The unlucky parents who have the six AM practice can go in there and grab a coffee and a donut. The people that go to the Friday night football game at the high school can stop there, grab some snacks for the team as well, and utilize it. I, I think it's a great, great area to do something with. As a Boston public school teacher, I must say, I, I trust in all of you. I, I wouldn't want your job, but I, I'm putting, you know, faith in you, and I know that this could be something very, very exciting for this, for this side of Milton. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job and the timing. Anybody else? Ma'am, yes. Oh, sorry, there were two. I'll take black sweater first, and then, are you both wearing a black sweater? Sorry, you both are. Come on up. What, the, yes. Thank you. First one to stand up wins. Two black sweaters, that was unlucky.
That was unlucky yourself.
That was unlucky. Brown, all right, sorry about that.
Bee Cockro, town meeting member, precinct ten. Seventeen Tucker Street. I don't have a problem with the commercial development, however, I would like to see some residential, and it doesn't have to be for young families, but for single, young professional people, like my kids who are still at home. Thank you.
Sir.
Reserve a couple, get a gun. Hi, my name's Scott Matthews. I live at eleven Harold Street, over in the Pine Tree Brook area. I'm a town meeting member, precinct four. Most of what I want to say has already been said by most people here, but I just wanted to come and express my support for the project. I previously, before moving to Milton, six and a half years ago, lived in a, an urban environment myself, grew up in Brooklyn, came from Cambridge, and having closer access to services was a great improvement in our lives. And coming here, we, you know, we came here for the beauty of Milton, for the schools, for the environment, we've made a lot of great friends, but not having much in that area is a little painful at times, having to go all the way across town to shop, or I personally go to Wegmans because it's, it's a little easier for us in terms of what we have, so, yes, we have the Tedeskes, but that's more if I have run out of eggs or I'm out of juice, so having something a little bit more feasible in terms of a market, and even more so that myself and my other neighbors can congregate at would be very valuable to us. So very in support of this process. I agree with what you were saying before about making sure that we have a little bit more details in, in the zoning process as we push this through, but I would not like to not see it stopped here. I'd like to see it pushed through so that we can give it a chance to build up and give our town meeting members a chance to vote on it, and our people can lobby their town meeting members to say yea or nay for their support or their lack thereof. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Matt Nigery, and I live at sixty-three Sumner Street, pretty close to where the development is going to, proposed development could be. I am strongly in favor of the Ice House and some sort of market and mixed use. I think something that has been said, I have young teens, and they would love to have a place that they could work. This could bring a lot of jobs, or a few jobs, to a number of people in the area. There's nothing there for them, you know, we have to drive them here or there for a place, and they would love to be able to have something close by to make, you know, to work, and I think that's a valuable thing for them to have and to be able to do, so. There we go.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Callahan. I'm, live in sixteen Orano Street in the greater neighborhood there, and precinct four, town meeting member. I'm not going to repeat, I agree, I'm a supporter of this project and the change in the zoning. I did want to echo one thing that one of the previous supporters said. I, in my day job, I work, I'm the executive director of the, something called the Massachusetts Affordable Housing Alliance, it's a nonprofit that works to achieve more affordable homeownership opportunities for, for low and moderate income residents, and I've been in that business for thirty-two years or so. Started when I was ten. One of the proudest moments I've had with, with, is in the evolution of this project, when housing was added, when affordable housing was added, it got more popular in the neighborhood. People in the neighborhood asked for housing, asked for specifically affordable housing. That's a rare thing to happen in greater Boston, maybe even rarer in Milton, and I think we should support that. I also wanted to just say one thing, and this is, you know, given my job, this is an interesting, maybe an interesting comment. Forty-B is not a threat. Many of us, I think there are people in town that would support a large-scale forty-B development there, eighty, ninety, a hundred units. That's not a threat. The region, Milton, needs affordable housing, but it is a choice. It is a choice that the residents, I mean, the owner of the property has, and it is probably the highest and best use of that property. So we, to the, to the folks that are saying no to this development, I think that's something they've got to seriously think about. Milton has considered itself often, I've heard this, that we're immune to forty-B, and it is true that I don't believe there's ever been a successful forty-B development in, in Milton's history, and not that I'm aware of. But one will happen at some point. Maybe some of them that are on the drawing boards now, maybe this could be development. I think what the, what Ned and, and the owners have proposed here is a sensible development, blending two neighborhood needs, affordable housing and commercial development, and does it in a reasonable fashion that blends in with the neighborhood, and that's why I support that.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the hall that wishes to speak towards the application? Is there anyone raising their hand out there? I just want to, don't want to forget about the hall. Okay. Sloan?
I was in the hall.
Oh, you came in, all right.
Thank you very much. My name is Priscilla Hayden Sloan, and I live at fifty-five Pongard Ave. I'm also a town meeting member from precinct ten, and I've attended, I believe, six of Ned's information sessions, and I come before the board seeking clarification. There have been many questions that have been brought up at these meetings to clarify could's and should's and possibles in the language of the article. I've read the article, and I think what we need to understand as residents is, what are you considering? What is coming before you? What are we deciding on? Are we deciding on the idea of what we want, or is this conversation related to the specific language of the article that is in front of you? Because as I've read the article, what I'm hearing people say that they favor is, is a concept that's different than the language in the article. And when we've asked for clarification, we've not received the clarification because it might exclude some possibility of something that might be built there in the future. And so as a town meeting member, I really need to understand what you're considering, what's before you. Are we talking about the specific language in this article that Ned is presenting, or are we talking about the pictures and the ideas? Because I, I think other folks have brought up that point. They don't exactly match, the new concept doesn't match the pictures, and I think some people learn visually, some people learn auditorily, and some people learn through reading. And right now, the information that we're receiving doesn't match. What we see visually doesn't match what's written, and what we're hearing auditorily doesn't match visual or what's written. So before I would be asked to consider voting at town meeting, I really need to understand from these boards what, what we're looking at and what we're being asked to do, because if we approve zoning that is different from what people want, you know, if we don't understand that this zoning is a certain scale, and if we say, "Yes, that's it," it can't really be changed, because my understanding of zoning is it becomes law. We're talking about some pretty important and specific details that really need to be hashed out before we go before town meeting, because you are the experts, but we, I think, don't understand specifically what the details of this project are, and we need you to help define them.
So I'll answer the question, just for the standpoint of
Thank you.
...giving you some clarification, because I tried to do it at the beginning of the meeting.
Yep.
Right now, there's nothing officially before us. The planning board has not submitted an article amongst ourselves to, or a zoning article. There's no citizen petition in front of us, but there's certainly a draft.
Yes.
And so the draft is what we're considering, or discussing tonight. We're not really considering anything. We're discussing the draft tonight. The pretty pictures, the concepts, that would come subsequent to town meeting approval. So what town meeting would approve is zoning, and, and whatever would be allowed under zoning would be the context upon which someone would make an application for a specific project. The town can make the zoning as specific or as, or as vague as it, as it so chooses through the process, within certain parameters, obviously, but that is, what we are talking about is the, is the document, not the design. I think the document... I think the document, or the design, is loosely based, or frankly, the document may be loosely based upon what the design is trying to achieve. But ultimately, the paper and the words are what we're trying to get to the bottom of here tonight. And whatever is shown from a project standpoint, until there's an application before us for an actual project, we don't really know what we're considering other than the article that's going to do for us.
If the zoning provides specifically for a project, you can assume you would get that project. If the zoning says this project that you've been talking about tonight is something that's possible, we'd have to wait. The McKeens don't intend to develop this land. They plan to sell it to a developer. And the developer will look at the zoning and decide. The developer may not have the benefit of this meeting. The developer will decide what the developer wants to do. But if the zoning specifies what the project is going to be, which this zoning does not, then the people can be reasonably assured that they will get what they think they will get.
Can I ask a question that you may help clarify and may help clarify things for people? If they go forward with a citizen's petition that's drafted, whether it's changed or not between now and town meeting, if it gets by town meeting as approval, how much can we tailor it after that?
Well, the planning board...
The zoning, I just want to clarify this question for you. The zoning or the application?
The zoning.
Okay.
The planning board, when zoning is submitted, whether the planning board submits it or whether a citizen submits it, the planning board holds a hearing. And often, the planning board says this article needs change. And so, the planning board comes up with a planning board revision of the article. And if this article were not to emerge at some point as a planning board article, the planning board after hearing, which would be somewhat similar to what's happened tonight, the planning board could recommend an alternative article to town meeting and the warrant committee.
So, just my follow-up question then, is if the board retools the article in a way that it feels is appropriate to put before town meeting, and the property owner doesn't agree with what has been represented, what happens then?
So, the article would come before, if a citizen's petition was filed, the citizen's petition would come before the planning board for a hearing. The planning board would decide whether or not to support it, make changes, recommend changes, or say, we don't like this at all. And we would make a recommendation to the warrant committee. And then, the warrant committee would have a similar hearing.
But I think a clarification, by asking the question, I was trying to make it clear to people. If it's a citizen's petition, you know, in whether or not the planning board agrees with it, if it passes as a citizen's petition, then what a lot of people have said tonight about, you guys are the experts, you can make it work, we won't be involved with that.
Right. Ultimately, the warrant committee makes a recommendation to town meeting. And town meeting decides whether or not they agree with the warrant committee. And so, they will either agree with the, the warrant committee will either agree with the planning board, will agree with the citizen's petition, or it could come up with something entirely different on its own. And it will make a recommendation to town meeting on whether or not to support the article, or support the article with changes. And then, town meeting will vote.
So, if you, if you go to town meeting and you congregate and decide that this is something you want and you pass it as a citizen's petition, you've taken some of the editing of the, or some of the input of the planning board out of the process.
Well, to some extent, on the zoning piece, but not on the project piece, because we would still have to issue the permit.
But still, the zoning.
We can't disagree with the zoning.
Exactly. If somebody comes and they live within a zoning...
So, the zoning would set out the allowable uses, the building footprint and other specifics, usually maximum. I don't know if we usually do minimums for building footprint. But then, it would, the petitioner or the owner would file a permit with the planning board, and we would go through the full public process like we do go through on every project. So, we would discuss conditions. We would hear from the community. We would talk about...
Traffic impacts.
Traffic, environmental impacts. Yeah, all the things that we talk about. We would get an application like this. And we could put all sorts of conditions on it if we need to, or none. And I think that might be what people are referring to with respect to the expertise of the board.
But the conditions would be outside of the permit.
But there would, there would...
The zoning...
Certain parts of the zoning that would make clear what is allowable and what isn't.
So, my point, I guess, is to you is, if you don't think this specifically tells you what they're going to build today, and you go and you pass this as a citizen's petition, then that's what you're going to live with. We're not sure what they're going to build. And like Alex said, what's proposed is not necessarily proposed by a developer who comes in and says, these are my guidelines? Well, this is what I'm going to build.
Yeah, so that was my question. If you retooled it in a way that it didn't meet the needs of the property seller, then is that, does that go back to them and say, this is what we would put forward as an article, and you can, you know, agree with the changes that we've recommended or not agree? So, then, that's how the seller would make a decision?
No, it goes to the warrant, right?
The owner, it isn't the owner's zoning.
Right.
It's the town zoning. And the owner might not like it. The owner could then sell the land to a developer who might like it. The developer, in the end, would have, would determine whether or not the developer would buy the land because they think they can work with the zoning. The owner can certainly say what the owner would like to have, but they're just another resident. And obviously, obviously, you know, what happens to the land will be more immediately impacted if the owner doesn't like it. But, you know, it's, the owner's opinion will be given due weight.
But I think what's, again, being lost is if we don't agree as a planning board with a zoning bylaw that we find that would be, you know, beneficial to the town, then they could go with a citizen's petition.
But town meeting still has to vote on it. And we still have to, and we still get a chance to comment on it.
So, I'm just saying, if you vote as a group at town meeting with a citizen's petition, then you're not necessarily having the full benefit of the planning board. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
What Mike says is very true. You know, what will happen is there will be public hearings. You know, the citizen petition comes forward. The planning board still has to hear it, make recommendations on it, help change it if they so choose to. If the petitioner chooses to ignore that, the planning board still comes forward to the warrant committee with their recommendation. The warrant committee is hard-pressed not to go along with the planning board's, I mean, they occasionally do, but it'd be very rare that the warrant committee, you know, I haven't served on it for so many years, would go contrary to a planning board recommendation. The warrant committee's recommendation goes to town meeting. And again, it'd be a very high hurdle. I'm not sure if it's ever happened that a zoning that's been not supported by any of the town departments or committees has ever passed town meeting. I mean, I may be wrong, but it is an extremely high hurdle to get over.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sure. Can I, I'm going to have you respond at the end because I want to get through the rest of the public so that you'll have a chance. See if anybody else wants to speak before we go back. Yes?
My name is Kathy Conway, and I'm in Precinct Nine. And I live at 34 Over Green Trail Home Inc. And I've been at most of Ned's meetings. And I'm really excited about it. I think it sounds like a great project. I think the restaurant will be great, you know, for people to meet. I think the little supermarket, and it's not a big supermarket. I'm thinking of something like the, you know, the fruit center or something like that. I remember like 30 or 35 years ago when they put in the fruit center. It seems like the same discussions we're having. Oh, my God, the town's going to go, you know, and all like that. The only thing it was, commercial zoning, so they didn't have to go through that. And I know at the fruit center that all people are talking about trucks going up and down. Those trucks go in early in the morning because I'm often over there at Bruges or something, getting coffee. And a lot of the people, at that time, that are in the parking lot are the people going to the gym, and not so much as the fruit center. But I think it sounds like a great idea. And I think Ned's done a great job.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment? Anybody out in the hall? Oh, yep, sir.
Hi, my name is Tony Farrington. I live at 114 Audubon. And this is an issue that I've followed closely over the last several months. And I've attended almost all the meetings that Ned has held. And just taking a step back for a moment from the specificity of the project itself and what it might look like, one thing I'd like to remind everyone of, Deborah mentioned earlier a moment ago, a sentiment I'd like to echo, which is trust the process. I think we have a great form of town government here. We have five very talented people that have been elected to the planning board. We have three wonderful selectmen. And we have a very rigorous, and I would say vigorous, town meeting. So, there are checks and balances that are inherent in our form of government. And ultimately, as many meetings as we may have, this is a bit of a leap of faith. But if we put faith in ourselves and we trust the process and work together and collaboratively, I think we can make this a great project. No one person or body of people likes to have terms dictated to them. But what Kevin mentioned earlier was, I think we're moving closer to the middle. And so, we can't, with any specificity, identify at this point in time what it's going to look like. But if we all have faith in each other as a town, I think this can be great for the town.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi. My name is Sarah Callahan. I live at 111 Elm Street. I'm a town meeting member for Precinct Four. I had, actually had some longer comments prepared. I'm going to slide this folder to whoever wants it. It has both my comments and 18 pages of printed email responses from neighbors on Elm Street, Gulliver Street, and a few other streets on our side of town. I don't want to make Patrick mad by saying the west side of town. But I will briefly just say, first of all, that I appreciate that this forum was offered to people tonight. I think this is a great way. I've been participating in the meetings that Ned has offered. And the conversations that were taking place at those meetings are very, very different than what I'm hearing tonight. What I'm hearing tonight is great. I'm glad that you all are in the room to hear the comments, to hear both the positives and the concerns. And I think that's sort of the key, is that everybody realizes that preserving the parkway, preserving the beauty of this part of town that is going to be changed, and offering a mixed-use, commercial, residential, appropriately scaled development, those two things are not mutually exclusive. So, I hope that you all will continue to work through this article to give town meeting members an opportunity to vote on it in the near future. I think we all want to see this happen. I'm speaking on my behalf, my husband's behalf, who's here, and as I said, a number of neighbors who support the idea as presented to them in the article or the proposed bylaw that we're all looking at. So, in terms of transparency, people are actually seeing the document we're talking about. It's not all just out in space. So, I want to just support that. Thank you. Is that okay to?
Yes, and we'll just make a note for the record on TV that there's 18 pages of comments.
18 pages of...
They'll all be available in the public record for review.
Thank you.
We're not going to read them all into the record tonight. Anybody else? We'll go back to Ms. McFiehan. Thank you.
I thought that I brought up the fact that the proposal here does suggest that professional studies be done to see what the impact of this development will be on parking, on traffic, and safety in this area. And it would seem to me that these studies should be done before we make the decision to change the zoning here. Because if it shows that it will have a substantial effect on this area, the negative part of it, then I don't see any reason to go ahead and change the zoning.
I support that point too. Upfront information would go a long way.
Do you have a comment? Okay.
Hi. I'm Maggie Oldfield, and I reside at 237 Hillside. And I think I bring a unique perspective to this process since I've recently been through it. I think I'd be a hypocrite if I thought that the McKeens, granting the McKeens a change of use should not be allowed because that's what I just went through. But I'm here to just voice my frustration with the whole process and the politics involved in drafting the zoning. During our process, we were questioned about every aspect of our 50-year-old business. The zoning requirements that you guys wrote into our zoning had us providing you with a copy of our deeds and our leases. We had to submit an employee and an equipment list. And we had to submit the amount of product that we intended to sell. We had to establish a 40-foot loading zone. We had to agree to a 15-foot fence setback with the installation of a black rubber sound barrier. And our permit was only good for initial term of three years. And as I read this draft zoning, I was not only envious of the opportunity that this site was asking for, but I found myself just getting really, really pissed off at this whole entire process. Because nowhere in the zoning are you asking for any of this. There are no deeds or leases being asked for, no names, no hours of operation. My hours of operations are limited, and nowhere in the zoning is it limited. My incoming deliveries can only occur between 9:00 and 2:00. And this zoning allows four hours between 9:00 and 4:00, to the extent feasible. And I could go on and on with the inequalities, but I think you hear my frustration. And when I was going through this process, I specifically asked you guys if this was going to be the new standard. Just like you were trying to draft a sign by law that had one set of standards that could easily be referenced, I thought, moving forward, that our landscaping business use could provide the framework for all non-conforming businesses in residential neighborhoods. So much time and financial resources, as you all know, have been spent drafting, arguing, and defending my bylaw. It would make only sense that this would be the new standard. Again, in my little experience in zoning, I understand that if this bylaw were to pass town meeting and someone challenges it claiming it to be spot zoning, the town of Milton's argument would be that it would be applicable to other sites in town. So, I'm wondering, what are the other properties? It says in this bylaw that it would apply to a lot on a state-owned parkway. So, what is the definition of a parkway? Can the term "parkway" be applied to a road or a street or an avenue? Like Blue Hill Ave., Randolph Ave., Reed'sdale Road, Brook Road, and Granite Ave., those are all state. So, to me, this bylaw kind of feels like it's a backdoor version of the pre-existing non-conforming business bylaw that you guys have been working on. And I'm truly been rooting for you guys to craft such a bylaw because then we wouldn't even be in this situation. And I really don't envy your position. I know you're all volunteers because everyone is always unhappy in these situations. But that is really the very definition of a successful mediation. But that is really the very definition of a successful mediation. So I hope that you guys can resolve this. I think a development on this site is a great idea. I'm not against a development, but I just feel like this process, you guys pick and choose what projects get subject to what regulations, and there's not any equality across the board in this town. Like, could I move my landscaping business use down to this property, and now, all of a sudden, I don't have to follow all of the stuff that you guys are making me do?
Thank you. I'm just going to make one quick comment to you with regard to your process. This is the process for constructing the bylaw. And the special permit process would likely take on an entirely different, you know, take on entirely different parameters. That's when we get into hours of operation. Some of that is in your bylaw, some of it's not. Some of it might be in this bylaw, some of it's not. But the special permit process is where the details get worked out in most cases. So certainly, that process would be expected to take place on anything that happened on this site under any proposed zoning.
Right. So all of those things I mentioned was in my enabling zoning, and that's why I was stuck with it.
You might want to also point out that we didn't develop this bylaw.
And we didn't, right. So that stuff may end up in this bylaw.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, don't despair.
Yes. Anybody else? Sir?
I wasn't meaning to speak, so bear with me. Paul Donovan, 360 Blue Hills Parkway. I've been a resident for forty-five years in Milton. I'm from South Boston as well. I just want to make sure that we don't make a mistake with the zoning that will really affect this neighborhood. It's the zoning I'm worried about, not the advancement of the center, or what's going to happen to it. We've got a very diverse neighborhood, which has been great. I love to raise my kids here. I'm afraid about the environmental impact. We've had flooding in the past because of some issues with the schoolyard and the high school. We've had issues with storms during the winter where you can't even see to turn around the corner or to go on the other side of the parkway because of the way the parkway gets plowed. There's a lot of little things that we need to consider to make sure that it's safe and that it doesn't change the nature of the neighborhood. And even though I hear that I can get a thousand people to sign for this, I've lived in the neighborhood and on the parkway for forty years, no one's talked to me about it. Now, part of that may be because I don't have the time to go to meetings, but there's a lot of people in the neighborhood who don't, and we need to consider what they feel as well. Because I think this end of town has been very open, and very diverse, and very friendly, and I'd hate to see that change.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? All right. I don't see any more hands. So thank you all for your comments. They're very much appreciated. Ned, do you want to address anything in addition to the question of whether the residential is currently proposed as apartment or condos, which I think was the only question I got other than Ms. Sloan's question?
The proposed bylaw with respect to the issue of condo versus apartment is purposely left open. I think the sense is it would tend to be rental as an entry, point of entry for young couples who may start a family and then want to purchase a yard. I know this is not the type of place I would personally would have moved to with a child, with children, when we had a children, and we moved to a yard. And I think probably a lot of people would agree with that, although not everybody. So I think the notion is it would be rentals, and that would, if it were proposing twenty percent affordable, it's more likely to be twenty-five under a financing regimen, and then all of the units would qualify for inclusion on the town's affordable housing list. And there was an intent with respect to that. I did suggest earlier the possibility of citizens' petition. My goal is not to do that. Our goal is not to do that. It's to work with the board to refine the zoning. Zoning in Milton is a little bit like threading the eye of a needle with a rope. It's not easy. It ought not to be easy. It's difficult. It takes a lot. You have to listen carefully, and you have to adjust. Zoning does have to create a template. It's very difficult to zone to specificity. I think in Maggie's case, it was specificity because it was a rezone to allow an existing use on a site that was already in use. So it'd be a little bit different with respect to that. So with respect to the zoning, what I would say is that the zoning attempts, as drafted, attempts to mirror the picture, except that the picture was developed a year ago when the concept did not include residential. I can tell you upfront, the McKeens have spent no money since town meeting. They spent a lot of money on the run-up to town meeting, and they've spent nothing since, and they have no intention to spend more money. So the idea that there would be traffic studies, additional engineering studies, and other analysis for the property is unlikely to occur as part of the effort to create a zoning template that would work for the property. If zoning doesn't pass, because we can't get to zoning that creates a reasonable template that provides opportunity as provided, then the opportunity to do the commercial as proposed goes away. And that goes all the way up to the point of town meeting. If town meeting were to vote no, it's two-thirds is a high threshold at town meeting. I've been through those favorably successfully and unsuccessfully, it's a high threshold. And if that would fail to pass, then obviously, the McKeens would look to alternative use. They have received one significant offer that is premised on doing a mixed use, and the offer was conditioned upon passing zoning. The McKeens chose not to accept that because they chose not to tie themselves to one offer or without knowing whether or not zoning would pass. And so, the McKeens are asking the town to take a bit of a leap of faith that what gets developed in the zoning will produce a good development. I think it can. The bylaw is a pretty good start. It's not far off of the bylaw that was amended as part of a public hearing process a year ago with the planning board. There are changes, but it's not significantly far off, and the planning board voted to recommend that for approval to town meeting last year. We do look forward to working with the planning board and others to try to refine it, and I am heartened by all of the comments that I heard tonight, that I think that there's a reasonable pathway to get to yes, and I would look forward to working with the board.
So Ms. Corcoran, I think that the key for the people sitting in this room tonight, on this side of the room anyway, is the timing. You know, Katie, could you share with us the timeline for the May town meeting, please?
Well, yes.
For May or for special?
May. Special would be tough to figure. I want to deal with May.
Well, for May, I mean, the warrant closes January 5th.
January 5th.
And I don't know if the town administrator's here, if she wants to come up and join us. I don't know if we have a, I mean, the warrant usually goes to the print for the annual around the late March. It has to be at home seven days before the town meeting, so usually, that's the first, and then there's a proofing period. But it is a, you know, it can be a rush in late March, early April is usually the timeframe that it's being finalized with the printer. We did have the office take a look at, for a winter town meeting in February. Now, the date they picked was February 13th, which would have meant, you know, us voting, calling a special town meeting last night, voting to close the warrant on December 1st, sending the articles to the warrant committee on December 7th, the warrant would have to go to the printer on January 5th. So you're talking a holiday season in the middle of that proofing period, the final changes to the printer by January 18th in order to get the warrant in the homes by January 31st. So if you talk, late February, you're talking pushing those dates out by a couple of weeks. Warrant would go to the printer probably middle of January, and we'd have to be in the homes two weeks, again, two weeks before, so we'd have to be in the homes by mid-February. So that's just pushing your dates out two weeks.
In all likelihood, just because of the shortness of the time and the shortness of the planning board being able to have hearings and meetings, it would be quite likely that the warrant would go out with no recommendation at this time.
I would say that's pretty likely. I mean, we have two more meetings this year, one on December 8th, one on December 22nd. I got that done. I didn't say it earlier. So now, everybody knows December 8th and December 22nd are our next meeting dates. We wouldn't have another meeting prior to, what'd you say, January 5th, the warrant committee?
January, well, under this scenario of a February 13th town meeting, the warrant would go to the printer.
I'm sorry, I was talking more for May.
For May, January 5th is the closing date.
The closing date.
So articles would have to be into us by that date, and then they would go to the warrant committee after that.
Right. So I mean, I think we're, I think for the purposes of this table, I think you're hearing that, you know, it's a tough slog to get this done by, I think a town, a February meeting is going to be pretty tough to have a planning board article, if not impossible.
I hear that. It's not, and I don't want to put undue pressure on the boards and on town meeting to try and get there. I think February and May are, they're not, they're not a big, not a far part. It does have to happen, if at all, by around, by the May town meeting. I've got two major rezonings coming forward at the same time. I know that you are, there's a lot of stuff happening now. I've got a couple of them. They take time. You know, last night, I was here till quarter after 12:00 with the Concom. The boards only meet so often, and there's only so much time in each meeting to get things done, and I know that's a difficult thing. It's hard from, on the practitioner's side, dealing with the number of different properties and different type of projects, and impacts, and studies, et cetera, that you have to build back time, and it takes time. So what I think I can do tonight is I can commit to a process with the board that would start December 8th, 22nd, or whatever month it's in January. I think we can probably get quickly to a draft of a bylaw that's a little tighter than what you see here, that could work. I do think that it's very important that it have the mix of uses, because I think that's an important part of the support that got generated through the process. I think people are very clear about what they are supporting. I started, the first meeting I had was in March, and by April, the plan was the same basic commercial space with housing on top. That hasn't changed from a single meeting that I've had with all sorts of people over the course of the last six to seven months. So people are pretty clear in what they're supporting. I think we can work on tightening the bylaw. It's got to look substantially like it does, subject to how does it fit from a parking perspective, from a open space perspective, from a massing perspective. There's only so much you can do on two acres to achieve all of that and make it marketable.
So what is the board's, how does the board want to, do we want to just hear, put aside time on December 8th to discuss a bylaw?
I'd like to know what else we have on the agenda for December.
Do we like to look at a subcommittee? I mean, this is the table right now, so December 8th right now. Tim?
I know I'm on with 245 Highland Street, hoping to close the hearing that night.
Pulte just got moved to December 8th, so we have those two.
245 Highland Street, as Mr. Corcoran just said.
And just running my, you do have to open that hearing.
Yeah, I'm going to. I made a note. Thank you.
Town Farm, which was continued to December 8th. We have 683 Brush Hill Road, definitive subdivision modification. We have 131 Elliott Street, planned unit development, special permit. We also have a, Bill, how would you describe 540 Harlem Street?
We have, the developer lost the plan, the Mylar Plan. It needs to be redesigned. No changes to it, it just needs to be redesigned. Only one of the.
Sounds like an easy thing to do.
It is. The developer gets the Mylar.
Anyway, that's on the list.
So that's on also, and then.
Does the board have any interest in having a subcommittee work on this?
It would all seem necessary.
I'm just, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how we achieve this in December, how we just achieve a review of this in December.
I'd just like to make a comment tonight.
Please.
People, I keep hearing that people are not completely visualizing, understanding what they're, what's being proposed here. And it's one comment that I probably may have said the same thing at the beginning of the meeting, but one comment that made things kind of clear to me is, and I believe that said that this would be a market similar to the market in East Milton Square. So if you want to go over and sit at the market in East Milton Square, and keep in mind that, I think that's only two stories out, and they don't have any residential, that's what you're accepting here. So it's a pretty heavily used, I know they have guards there to keep people out the parking from, they're supposed to park there, and I got to believe they probably have 200 spots over there. So that's the scale of what you're talking about here. And if, at that scale, I would have to believe, just to try to make it work, you'd have to have traffic signals and turning lanes and such.
I think that we can come in with ideas for on the 8th, and specific zoning ideas. And I don't know that we need to have a committee, but I think that we do need some specific zoning ideas, and I'm always one willing to offer.
So let's bring our comments to December 8th. We'll put it on the agenda. It will be a.
I just, only because Ned just made the comment, if I understood him correctly, he said it has to remain relative to the scale that he has it.
That's what he said.
That's what he said.
I understand that. I want the people to understand that.
But that doesn't.
But we're in charge.
So we are in charge to a point, but I want the people to understand.
No, 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 we're in charge.
You're in charge of drafting.
We're in charge of this board.
Questions whether the zoning works for the developer.
That's correct.
Whether you go with the citizen or as well.
The developer is, though.
Okay.
So we'll have to get a disinterested developer in to read it.
Anything else from the selectmen?
It sounds like we're not talking about a, well, it sounds like we're talking about the May town meeting.
We're not, we're talking about May town meeting, and we're not asking you to leave quite yet, because I think we have something else to come up on that we're going to talk to people about. We have to go get Cheryl. Great. So I'm going to. Do we have a hearing on this?
Can I actually make a comment before we close anything?
We don't have anything to close. It's not, it was not real.
All right. Well, then, can I just make an erroneous comment? I just want to say it's really terrific to see how many people from the community on both sides of this project came out tonight. I think we're all better off when people engage. And zoning is a little bit boring, I know, but it's really fantastic to see how many people, thank you, Joe. I'm a zoning nerd, too. I don't think it's that boring, but most people do. But thank you so much for everybody that came out and sitting here until 9:30 at night listening, and I hope that you can continue to come back and offer ideas and suggestions. We have citizens speak at every meeting, so the public is always invited to come and share thoughts.
Yes, I second that. Thank you very much. And I'm going to quickly open the 7:40 public hearing for Pulte Homes, special permit for cluster development, Milton Woods Town Farm site, continued from November 10th, and requests or a motion to continue the hearing to December 8th at, Tim?
Eight.
Eight o'clock?
To vote.
Second, second discussion.
I thought we were meeting with you.
Yes, we are. I'm just quickly doing this to get it done.
Well, she thought we were meeting on that topic, which we're not, because it didn't happen.
No, but we can, we could do it in the hearing. Or are we going to do it outside of the hearing?
Well, we can do it right now, I suppose. So discussion is to vote down the motion, and have a conversation about this.
Yes.
All right, so.
I reject. I don't know what the motion is.
Vote no, all in favor.
No.
All right, so we're going to keep the 7:40 open, and we're going to have a conversation about this next one here. At the end, I will. I will be back at the end. You don't need to stay. I promise I'll do it. We'll do it at the end. So I've already opened 7:40. All right, so close some doors here.
We'll send them home.
Will you close the doors, please?
I know, it's too bad. We're only going to talk about the, so we did send the applicant home for the record. So let's just be mindful of that, the applicant is not present.
I'm not sure that there's a lot that we really can say. Our last discussion wasn't an executive session, but prior to that, we had, we did have some general discussion about.
I have one thing before we get there. If it's not on the agenda, maybe we should discuss it as not. If it's not on the agenda, maybe we should discuss it as not as part of the--
Is this new business or something?
Of the special, but as new business, because we don't want this hearing--
I, I agree, to be a problem.
So we want to close the hearing and then discuss it.
All right, so I'm going to request a motion to continue hearing to December 8th at 8:00 PM.
Second.
And all in favor.
Aye.
And before we do that, open the 7:45, Dennis and Martha Burke, Special Permit for Cluster Development, 245 Highland Street, continued from November 10th, and ask for a motion to continue to December 8th at--
7:45.
7:45. So move, second, all in favor.
Aye.
All right, great. New business. We're going to talk about the affordable housing, please, at Town Farm. So Katie, you had just started to say something.
Well, we did have a public discussion a little while back, probably in September, about the fact that once the four acres are finally known and defined, because there was some talk that the developer was looking to rearrange the four acres and redraw the lines, which would, that's, that is up to the discretion of the trustees. And actually, we should, so, we've already called to order a selectmen, so we'll call to order a meeting of the Governor Stoughton trustees at the moment, at 9:33. So we had some discussion, and where we really came out on that was, Pulte has indicated an interest to construct two affordable units in the men's almshouse. There's the larger main almshouse, there's the barn, which is not in condition of being saved. There has been some suggestion by some residents that it could be replicated to preserve the historic look of the four acres, but possibly used for a different purpose, such as affordable housing or, or market housing. But we decided really as a group that, you know, we're not planners, we're not the planning board, you, you are. And whatever might happen in the main, the men's almshouse would still leave the other structures, including the pest house, who I believe the plan is to relocate that to the four acres. That would leave other property and other existing buildings in the four acres needing a use for those facilities. And we wanted to try to look more globally at the four acres, see what made sense there. It, would it make sense then to do affordable housing in the other buildings, to do market rate housing in the other buildings, or some other purpose altogether, rather than just initially agreeing that two, two affordable units at the men's almshouse might, the question is what happens with the rest of it? So we wanted to try to, we considered having a public hearing to get input from residents of the town as to what they might like to see the four acres used for. We have not yet scheduled that. We talked about it, but then there was a question of whether there may be a request from Pulte to redraw the four acres. And that, I understand from, we had an email from Tim today saying that's currently not before you, it's the initial drawing of the four acres, which is up on the screen, is, is still at play. So that's new information to us, that, that it does not appear that at this time that Pulte is coming back looking to redraw for the sake of the drainage easement. Is that, Bill seems to be motioning something, so maybe that's not the case.
What are you motioning?
I didn't motion anything, but I would have raised my hand when Katie stopped talking.
Well, I saw you raising your hand.
No motions, please.
Presently, the only plan before the planning board is this four acre piece. The, when the question came up about the drainage easement and the requirement of having a drainage easement come across what will be, or what is trustee land, the, the thought was put out there, well, how do we remove that? We don't want it on our parcel. What else is there? Their solution to changing it was to take and draw the boundary line around that detention basin here, so that it comes up, comes across, and down, and what comes back to the trustees would be the wetland.
So it would effectively make the four acres three acres.
Yeah, well, you're losing acre.
Yeah. Well, you're, you're gaining an acre of wetland. So you're getting four acres, but you're getting a wetland, an acre.
A wetland buffer.
Which, to me, is ridiculous, because whatever you do in the future, you're going to need to have the ability to put drainage somewhere. You keep the drainage area, you have the, they're taking care of it, you're putting your drainage into their system. Their system is designed to take whatever is developed on your acreage anyways.
Question?
How can we know that?
So we have been asked to approve a plan that has drainage on that four acres. Question is, do you approve of that being restricted by the use of that land for drainage?
We haven't really had a discussion about that, because there was some question about what Pulte was going to be asking. And again, it's up to the trustees' discretion whether to redraw the lines.
So we can't approve a plan that has drainage on someone else's property, basically?
Without our--
Without your approval.
Right, correct.
Understand. Understand. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts here. As Katie said, you know, we've, you know, we've got historic buildings, we've got them, are they situated where we want them situated? I don't know. Can we, you know, is it feasible to preserve them? Would, you know, I think most people would like to preserve them. How many, how many units can, of affordable housing, if affordable housing is the correct way to go, can you get on there? What is the impact to Governor Stoughton? I mean, there's just so many things.
Well, in your charter, I mean, you're very charter. Can you honor your charter by putting a drainage easement here when you could other, is that helping to Milton's poor? I mean, it's, it's a--
Well, again, the, the charter's, you know, a question mark too, of, you know, is affordable poor? You know, we don't know. You know, we'd hate to go through with something and find out halfway through that the Attorney General doesn't agree with us. So, you know, probably the most prudent route would be to file a complaint, as we did for the 30 acres, for the proposed use. You know, the, the 30 acre, you know, for various reasons, took over two years, I think, to get it through the system. I don't think the four acres would take that long, especially if we were talking affordable housing, but again, we don't know.
Historically, though, the property did house the poor, I mean, going way back, right? I mean, I read the Mass Historic Commission data, and--
It's a poor farm.
Right, I mean, people lived there who were poor, and they worked possibly for, in return, right? That was some of the history. So I guess one feeling that I would have is that if that's the history of the site, then it seems like that's not an unreasonable continuance of that history, is to have affordable housing on the property. So that's one, that's one way. The other thing is, the, we've been asked for this property to have its affordable housing requirement taken care of on the four acres, right?
Yes.
So we can't approve that either, without having your blessing on that. So there's two, you know, pretty significant decisions from your end, I think, that the planning board needs in order to be able to move, you know, either yea or nay on the Pulte application before--
I think, I think the latter part, I mean, even though I don't think we voted it yet, we probably could take that up and, and at least vote that without a location necessarily, but, but in concept, that either we're against it or, or agree with it.
Yeah, but again, that brings up the, the plan for the four, you know, for the full four acres.
Yeah.
It's contingent upon the four acres.
Yeah.
So the question I have is, do we have to have a hard and fast condition, or can we create a more flexible condition that says within a certain period of time of permit issuance, two, two affordable units have to be created?
The zoning, the zoning does require it to be on the premises or on the four acres, though the zoning does not say or somewhere else in town.
Didn't you say last week that we had some flex, some discretion?
No, the flexibility was put it on the site, or put it on the trustees' land, and then if they were to throw up their hands and said, we can't do it in either place, we want a modification of the zoning requirements, they could say that, but I don't think that we can do a modification of the zoning for good cause without knowing what the clause is.
I thought there was some discretionary clause in there that I missed, so I missed what you said last week.
So where are you at in the process? You continue this to December 8th? Are there a lot of issues still under consideration, or have you resolved a lot of the issues?
No, they're almost all resolved. There's a few minor things.
I'm, I'm a little bit lost on this drainage.
Yes, me too.
I, I don't, I don't have any concept that this drainage is ready to receive anything that could possibly be built there. I don't know that anybody ever said that. I don't know that our peer review ever suggested that. I don't, I don't know where that comes from. But the thing that's holding us up from giving Pulte a permit is their, taking care of their affordable housing component. Their affordable housing component is to move the almshouse to the four acres and create two units.
No, no, no.
The pest house.
The pest house.
All right, the pest house. And then put the barn, the almshouse, one of the houses.
They're going to put the affordable units in the almshouse, move the pest house and dump it. But there is one other issue that you, you haven't talked about, and that's the 100-foot buffer.
Yeah.
But that's still floating around out there.
The other thing would be, in terms of putting housing in a building without having thought about the four acres, would be how do you access it? Where are the utilities? Are you going to preclude a plan that thinks about everything comprehensively? You're going to make a decision that could hamper decisions you want to make down the road?
That's what we start with, yes.
Well, and when do they start building? I mean, when can they build 23 homes and get COs and have people living there for 10 years and have all of that tied up, and we still don't have any affordable units?
Well, that's why I said--
So that's the challenge. I think that's where the condition's going to have to say, at some point, construction stops until that's resolved.
You build them on site, then?
That's fine. I'm just suggesting that the, the planning board's discretion is, to a certain extent, put them in one of these two or three places, and, but until you put them, there's, there's no market rate housing after a certain amount, because otherwise, they'll just, it'll just--
There's no, there's no permit, because there's no place to achieve their affordable housing.
Right, so then they--
There's no way for them to do it.
So then they've got to go back to the select board and--
They have to ask for an amendment to the--
But if they have to do that, then--
Then we're talking a lot of time again.
We want, you know, plans showing where the affordable, that we want a 20,000-square-foot lot, and we want plans showing what they're going to do to these units. We're going to want to know what the unit's going to look like, what they're going to do to the almshouse, and not just say, do your best, or--
But this plan essentially says, we're going to give you two 20-acre, you know, two 20-acre lots on the four acre parcel.
20,000 square foot.
20,000, yes, square feet, getting a little late. 20,000 square foot lots on the four acres. You're going to have a third acre devoted to, to drainage. So now you're down to two acres, of which the trust still controls.
All right, could you say that again? I want to make sure we get it right. So two 20,000-square-foot lots.
Right, so two 20,000-square-foot lots. So that's an acre, for all intents and purposes.
Which is not the men's almshouse, is it?
Well, one of them's, oh, I mean, one of them is, is the almshouse.
The two lots are in their development. That's what they're supposed to do, is provide two affordable lots in their development, so that takes it from 24 to 22. They say we don't want to do it, because the zoning says, as the alternative to providing these two lots in the development, you can provide a duplex on--
Oh, it says a duplex, and does the duplex have to sit on 40,000 square feet?
12,000 square feet.
Just on 20,000 square feet?
So I think--
So one 20,000-square-foot lot, okay?
I think, I think a relevant question here is, so subsection 21 is what we're talking about in terms of the affordable units being in a rehabilitated building. But then also, paragraph 18, which is where the sort of modification clause is. And how extensive is the board's discretion in issuing modifications? And I'm going to go ahead and ba-doo, ba-doo this, so it's a little bit bigger on 18.
Two units on 20,000.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. So it's one 20,000-square-foot lot.
So it's not an acre.
But I mean, we're talking a duplex on the remaining Town Farm, unless the trustees, for some reason, say, no duplex on our land.
I guess what I'm asking is, does, does paragraph 18 allow you to just say, we're modifying 21?
Only if you, they can't do it.
We're just, I think you've got some thoughts in your head in what the modification would be. An off-site location?
Well, I, I mean, not even that, but I mean, like, if you wanted to draw a 5,000-square-foot lot around the men's house, or a 10,000-square-foot lot, or--
Go back to 18, then?
But is that, does that meet the affordable criteria, that it's, that it's comparable?
That's, you know, the, the definition townhouse in my architectural parlance is two units that are next to each other. If you're going to convert a building, it's more likely they're going to be horizontal. So I would just say, for clarity's sake, let's don't call them townhouses. Let's just say two units within an existing building.
It's duplex, right.
Why not, why not say, why not say we want to see what these are going to look like, and what you're going to do with the 20,000-square-foot lot?
What I'm saying is not necessarily the only way to accomplish two units in an existing building is by townhouse.
Well, that could be a modification.
When I said duplex, duplex means townhouses.
Side by side duplex.
I thought it meant just two units.
I mean, off-site could be, they go and find a 20-acre, 20,000-square-foot lot, not 20 acres, 20,000-square-foot lot, with a duplex on it. But that's timing. They've got to go find it, buy it, close on it, get us to approve it.
Or does it say that they can do that, though?
That could be a modification.
Well, but--
If the selectmen say--
It has to be needed to enable the application to go forward, and to do that, it, you have to show that either you can't provide the two lots, which of course is within their ability.
Right, so that's a pretty high hurdle.
And you can't provide the duplex.
So it's like proving a hardship on a variance. It's not an easy hurdle.
It's, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a litigated issue, which we don't want to create.
Right, fair enough.
What we need is for the trustees to tell us it's all right for, for Pulte to build two units on an existing building on the four acre lot.
And saying that we consider these are for the poor, and therefore that, you know, we don't need to talk to the Attorney General.
We think we're going to need to talk to the Attorney General. We're on the, in fact, the drainage easement, I think, if your next meeting is December 8th, and you need to know about the drainage easement, and I think we need to run that by the, at least by Town Council, and explore whether we need to go to the Attorney General and ask that question.
Both those as significant, the drainage easement or the duplex?
Yes, yes.
They're both, showstopper for Pulte.
I think one of the big things here that, when they looked at the men's house, the idea of the men's house creating two units was they were restoring that building. So they've got historic preservation there. It's leaving it in the place that it is. Taking the pest house, and moving the pest house so that it's opposite the men's house just preserves the rest of the property. It makes everything come in, if, if you want to make that another affordable, that can be done. The other part to this is, no matter what they do, it still is being retained ownership by the trustees. So the trustees own whatever units are being created as affordable here. They're not being sold to them, they're being given to them.
But it, going, going to the Attorney General, I mean, it's my understanding from the beginning that the Attorney General agreed that selling this land and accumulating the sum of money to be used for the poor of Milton was acceptable.
Yes.
Well, it's been, what has it been now, seven years? And the trustees don't have any sum of money. So the Attorney General could quickly realize that unless we are able to put this easement here and allow them to build this duplex, that the trustees are going to continue to see a zero sum of money. And that's going to be no help to nobody. And this whole issue of affordable or poor was ironed out in the original. Affordable is not poor.
I think when, when we had the Governor Stoughton Trust Land Committee, I think Mr. Sweeney stood in there smiling, we, we had night after night after night of trying to discuss affordable and who the poor are in the town of Milton. Is somebody who lives in an affordable unit poor? Can a poor person live in an affordable unit? This was not an easy topic. This is something that went on and on, and--
But that became irrelevant to the decision to sell in the land and accumulate in the sum for the poor. It had nothing to do with that.
Except that the report said that there would be affordable units.
But then you even get the HUD's definition.
Well, they're affordable units, zoning--
Yeah, what level of affordability, right.
60% AMI, poor. I mean, by HUD's definition, it is.
The affordable units here are going to have, Pulte is going to build them, someone is going to run them. But the rent sufficient to take care of the expenses, since there's going to be no initial capital cost, is going to may, make a, a rent affordable to someone that people consider poorer.
Right, that's what I say, 60% AMI, yeah.
So the--
I mean, I think you can do 60% of AMI, because you don't have any development costs and no--
Right, exactly.
And no land costs.
Right.
Doesn't, doesn't someplace in the zoning laws say 80% of mean income?
That's affordable.
That's, that's the, the maximum that it can be in order to be considered affordable.
You see, SHILs call it 80% or less. You can go down to not 20%.
So that, that still leaves us with the issue for the global vision for the four acres.
Right.
But, you know-- But, you know, now that we have information that we're still looking at the original map of the four acres-
Can you go back to the map, Tim?
We need to, I think we're going to need to consult with Town Council and talk about our next steps, and possibly convene a public hearing on what we want to do with the four acres. But we're at least going to need to get back to you on the drainage easement and on the two affordable units. It sounds like you're still working on the buffer issue and also a separate issue related to drainage.
Well, I still have an issue on the affordable, in the question of, are the trustees ready to take on managing and renting? And then, when you have people living there managing the property, you know, if there's any security issues, is there adequate lighting? Is there adequate access? And there's all sorts of stuff that you folks, I mean, for us, if it were two units within this development, we would make sure all of those things are part of what's being planned for there, right? If we just said, "Okay, two units in the almshouse," without knowing that anything else is done-
But that's not the, in my opinion, that's where the planning board purview is not, we can, we could say, if the selectmen said to us, "We'll take two units," the planning board can say, "You're doing two units here," and then they can also say, "And before you build the houses, you need to have that worked out, and you have to build the affordable units," or "Before you build more than 50% of the houses," or whatever criteria or condition we wanted to put on it. Now it's the applicant's responsibility, hold on, now it's the applicant's responsibility to take that condition and go meet it with the selectmen. But it's not our burden anymore. At that point, we can, we can give a condition and move forward.
But let's say they find out from the Attorney General, or they find through their planning that it's going to take five years before those two units are available.
And Pulte's got to come back and modify its special permit, because it can't meet its condition, so it has to come back.
So before they would-
We don't need to hold up our approval based on, that becomes the applicant's burden to go meet that.
They wouldn't get an occupancy permit if they didn't have the affordables produced at a certain-
If they can't meet it, I'm just saying, normally, your affordable units have to be done in conjunction with the rest of your units.
He hasn't said they wouldn't do that.
Right.
But if they are not yet ready to take on those units, right?
Well, then, Pulte, that's always, that's our burden.
This is unusual to put it on to someone, their responsibility on to someone else, is what I'm saying.
The trustees don't have to do it. They can get an apartment manager to run that thing.
But again, it's not the planning board's problem, because if the condition can't be met by Pulte, then they have to come back and modify their permit, and they're going to have to come up with two lots on-site, or show us that the burden and hardship is so bad that they can come up, we can come up with another alternative. That's the applicant's burden at that point.
Well, then, what's the language that goes in the special permit that makes them come back?
They don't get it, they don't get to build.
That's what you just said.
They don't get a building permit.
You can put anything, if you can express an idea orally, you can put it in writing. And you can probably put it in writing better than you can express it orally.
So why don't we come back to you, hopefully, before your next meeting, with at least some, possibly we can at least address the drainage, when we may want to set up a public hearing on the four acres and the affordable housing question.
Yeah, well, let's get it on agenda for our next meeting.
Yeah, we have to get it on, yeah.
Yeah, and next one is November 29th. I'm not sure we'll be able to get it on that night, because we'll want to give sufficient notice, but certainly, we can probably get it out for December.
When's your meeting, after the 29th?
The 6th.
So you could be ready to discuss it before the 8th.
We should, because they have something to do with the buffer.
16th?
The 6th.
Oh, okay. We'll be okay, because we're meeting on the 8th.
But I don't think we should discuss what it should be. There is a legal issue on the buffer, and the legal issue is, they want to give the town a restriction. They don't want to have a private restriction, they want to have a public restriction. My feeling is that the public restriction is not subject to the statute that limits restrictions to 30 years. So they want a public restriction saying that the 10 affected homeowners can do X, Y, and Z, and the town will mom to them and call them to, call them to order when they're out of order, and litigate when necessary. And my feeling is that this is a restriction that you guys would be crazy to accept.
But I think that's another one that's outside of our purview, right?
It should be a private restriction, one by the homeowners' association, and I think we can do that.
So you still have open issues.
We do have issues.
So I don't know about that. From where I was coming from, I thought-
Hold on, I'm just going to ask for a point of clarification here. I want to be careful about discussing that issue outside of the public hearing.
Okay.
So we can talk about it if you want, but I just want to remind everybody we're not in an open hearing right now.
I think that just flagging it is all we need to do.
That's great, okay, thank you.
So whether we're going to be able to get back to, on all of these questions before the 8th is probably unlikely, because December 6th, we have another public meeting that we're scheduling, which is going to be fairly lengthy, I assume. And Mr. Chairman said that we could announce it tonight, but we're in a Governor Stoughton meeting, so we'll do that after we have, we come back into the selectmen's meeting. But, so we'll do our best to try to get you some, at least some clarity on either the drainage question or the affordable units as soon as possible. We might have to schedule, we might have scheduled a special meeting for the public meeting on the four acres. It could be before or after December 8th, just depending on everyone's availability.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we're done with Pulte.
So we can adjourn as Governor Stoughton trustees and resume as selectmen's meeting, and perhaps this is a good time, if we, Mr. Chairman, on December 6th, the selectmen will be hosting a public meeting at the Council on Aging regarding a request that we received from New England Patient Networking, which is a company that's looking to operate a medical marijuana dispensary at 98 Adams Street, which is the Swift Hat Shop building. And we're going to be having a public meeting on that to have a presentation and also solicit input from the public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so while we still have the two boards assembled, we'd like to get an update from the Master Plan Implementation Committee, please.
Well, Katie and I spoke about this and thought while we were together, it would be a good idea for us to jointly give the two boards an update. The committee's been meeting monthly. It's been a good, active committee, I'd say. And you got, did you all receive a copy? I had Tim put some notes together about one of the areas of focus, which I think I'll go over in more detail. But first, I'd like Tim to give an update on what we've done about outreach. So our first sort of discussion was, let's reach out to all the various departments and committees that may or may not be familiar with the master plan, and they're, in fact, listed as key departments or people for the implementation. So we have Tim discuss that, and then also, one of the things that we talked about quite a bit is sort of town-wide traffic issues, and whether there's some traffic analysis that might be beneficial, and I'm going to have Tim talk about that as well. And then I'll come back and talk about the Wharf area with Katie.
So the main charge of the Master Plan Implementation Committee is to literally monitor the implementation section of the master plan, which is, I believe, in six parts? Six parts? And it contains, you know, housing, transportation, open space, historic preservation, economic development. And each of those sections has a sort of grid that has goals, and each of the goals has certain strategies and action items associated with it. And each of those goals also has a lead partner, basically. So the Board of Selectmen are lead partners on quite a few of the items. The planning board, similarly, is the lead sort of agency on a lot of actions. And so the implementation committee has been sort of trying to come up with a methodology to break down the master plan into chunks of, basically, each member is responsible for outreach to a certain number of departments and committees. Basically, A, letting these agencies and committees know, like, you were named as a lead agency for this action item, which, over the course of producing the master plan, there was a lot of buy-in and input from a lot of people in town, a lot of boards and agencies, but it's probably pretty easy to lose track of which of the items you were supposed to be responsible for at some point. So the first, the first step is basically kind of reintroducing people to the master plan, and basically coming up with a systematic way to, you know, reach out, I'll use, you know, the parks commissioners as an example. The parks commissioners have a certain number of goals that they're associated with, so we have a member that's reached out to them. I don't, did Liz go to one of their meetings? She might have. You know, but in a situation where there's, you know, a board that meets, you know, to go to their meetings to sort of reintroduce these items, and then, you know, keep up with this agency, you know, "You're responsible for doing this, you know, how's it going?" You know, because the Master Plan Implementation Committee was convened for a period of 10 years, and at the end of 10 years, they'll have to either recommend updating the master plan, or basically sort of reporting back on how it's been implemented. So there is that systematic approach of really building relationships with each of these boards and committees, and keeping track of their progress on the different implementation items. The goal is that as the years go by, you know, we can start checking things off of those implementation goals as they're achieved, and if they're not achieved, really coming up with, you know, is it a question of money? Is it a question of time? Is it a question of staff? So that the implementation committee can recommend to either the selectmen or town meeting, you know, "We have these goals, and we'd really like to achieve them, but we need these resources."
Tim, can I just interject one thing there? In terms of whether you go to town meeting or you go to the boards? One of the things we think, we talked about, I think I spoke to Katie about, is if on the town, on the selectmen side, on the town departments, if it could be built into the planning, you know, so the annual budgeting and planning is to think about what the, you know, how that can get part of the annual review of what that department's going to do. So it becomes part of the way, if you had a strategic plan, you know, how you would be working towards that strategic plan, same thing, is let's work towards the implementation of the master plan in the same way. So the planning board would need to be tackling things, too, in a systematic way. And that way, when we go to town meeting with the annual update that we're, the committee is charged with providing, it's, everybody's in town is working towards the implementation, not just one or two people trying to follow up.
So I think the committee's done a pretty good job so far of that first step of kind of reintroducing all of the relevant boards and committees and departments to the plan. I think in years two, three, four, is when we start to see, you know, some of those goals and strategies really being checked off, or at the very least, having a deeper understanding of what needs to be done in terms of getting some of those goals achieved. The other thing that Cheryl asked me to talk about is transportation planning. There's a transportation element to the master plan. Transportation sort of is a thread that runs throughout a lot of different implementation goals. And so we have, all the members are very interested, but we have, we have one member who's sort of taken up a crusade or a kind of mission to sort of be the transportation guy, Dick Burke, who's a member of the committee. And so he's met with the Traffic Commission, the, Traffic Commission, right? Yeah, I'm sorry. About a number of sort of master plan implementation items. We've actually also brought in Jeff Maxtoudis, who is a transportation planner for AECOM. He was one of the consultants that assisted the town in putting together the master plan, in particular, the transportation element, to talk about how to develop a sort of townwide, there's been a lot of discussion of a sort of a townwide traffic kind of study, so we can develop a sort of baseline of what are the traffic issues, where are the problem spots, what are the volumes, so that we can start making traffic decisions based on sort of our own data, as opposed to sort of every time a development comes along, we have, some traffic consultant comes in, we check that, and sort of, we'd like to have our own, or the sort of, the understanding of the committee so far is that, you know, looking into developing our own kind of baseline study. So Jeff came in and was able to help us understand some of the different modeling that is possible, that his firm does, with cities and towns throughout New England. We actually also just, our neighbor Quincy has just put out an RFP for a town, a citywide traffic study, so we're, we're keeping an eye on that as to sort of what kinds of lessons we can learn from that, and whether that approach, obviously, we're not as big as Quincy, but whether that approach would be something worth going into. And you may be aware that our DPW and engineering department are in the process of trying to develop a complete streets policy, and they've expressed an interest in working with the planning department on that, and putting that together in the coming months. And that's, that's something that, again, would really sort of have threads that run throughout a lot of the different transportation goals, complete streets in terms of traffic calming, in terms of pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, in terms of safety. So that's something that we're, I'm personally very excited about, I think the town should be excited about also. And that's, that's all she wrote on that, so Cheryl, you can-
Okay, so on the Wharf and on Town Landing, Tim, can you pull that map up that we talked about?
Yeah.
We were approached by the Friends of Milton Crew about an interest in getting involved in looking at whether there's capacity in the Wharf area to have their own dock, the dock that's more suited to getting into the water with a boat for crew versus a bigger type of boat. And also to think about a better place to store the boats, so that it's easier for people to get from, to take the boat from where it's stored into the water. The program's been growing quite a bit. They've had quite a bit of success at the high school level and middle school level, and also in the adult level, and I forget what they call that, masters, I think. And so along with that interest, Katie mentioned to us and made us aware of the lease with the yacht club having an extension now, but before that goes back out for an RFP process to, if there's a planning or thinking that needs to be done in this area, it would be a good time to do it before that goes back out. And then the master plan itself talks about increasing access, public access to the waterfront, the use here, and the master plan also talks about looking at our commercial districts and looking at the possibility of making them mixed-use districts or more vibrant districts. So we were thinking that this was an opportunity to sort of link many things together in a comprehensive study of this area, which could include the waterfront uses and include the business district. So what we convened, a lot, we had a meeting, you see the timeline, we had a number of meetings, but we had a meeting of all the interested parties. Obviously, the parks commissioners have a key role here, the trustees at 88 Wharf, actually, the other thing I didn't mention was that an interest in discussing whether moving the Swift Hat House building could be accommodated someplace on, in the same area. So those were all of the pieces. And so we convened a meeting of all these interested, I guess you'd say-
Stakeholders.
Stakeholders, thank you. And then we also had a site walk with stakeholders. And we got a lot of feedback about what people were interested in, and we also got, I think, a lot of support for this sort of having a neutral party, so an outside party come in and do a study for us, and that it would bring all of these people's opinions into some kind of a planning process and a planning document. So we were initially, Milton Crew had contacted a consultant who does waterfront planning, so we started with them to see if they would be an appropriate consultant to use, at least to sort of flesh out a scope of work. And what, after some conversations and back and forth and proposals, we, Tim, did you get a map? We're not looking at a map. There we go, thanks. Are you putting the list of folks together first? Okay, well-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the map, I think it's fine. The, so they, they seem to be, this consultant seemed to be more focused on like a business model, and we asked him, no, we're really a municipal kind of model here. We're not looking at this as whether somebody comes in and opens up a new waterfront business use in here. So then we started searching for other consultants who could do the planning work, as well as the waterfront portion of it, which is more directly related to, is there enough room in this water to accommodate another dock and accommodate the yacht club, and increase public access through possibly rental of stand-up, what do they call, boars, kayaks, canoes, et cetera? Because right now, there's this interesting, like I mentioned the interesting, there's parks ownership, there's town ownership where the farmer's market is, this is over here is where the boats are stored for crew. And then when the yacht club brings boats out into the water, they have a system that they use here, we have, there's lease agreements with 88 Wharf for the parking, and part of their approval process has to do with this, use of this land. And then there's this property, which is also owned by the town. And then there's the historic building, I think that was the police station originally. So what we've kind of come down to is having, because there's the cost associated with the broader study, we looked at what sources of funds there might be of- the broader study, we looked at what sources of funds there might be available. We're thinking that there's not an immediate source of funds that's adequate to cover the broader study. So we have a proposal for what that would be. That would be in the tune of just under $35,000, the scope of work. We didn't provide you with that because that's not the focus of what we're looking at right now. But the focus really would be on these waterfront uses. So that would be, can, can there be another dock in this area? How would it impact the way the yacht club uses this? Can we get better use out of this in terms of waterfront access? And is there anything else in this area along here which might be something that would help the benefit of the development of the rest of the commercial area? So for example, shared parking or if there was further facilities for the farmer's market, you know, so for example, there's no toilet facilities for anybody to use in this area. But there's some amenities that could help the public use of this part of the property. So what we're looking at now is a study that focuses on that. That's the proposal that we circulated. And it, we have the fee proposal in an amount that I think is reasonable. We talked to two or three other consultants about doing this work and we've honed in on one we, we feel has the very, has excellent qualifications to do this work. And we would like to go ahead with this consultant. And that's the consultant's proposal that we provided to you. So the planning board has in its budget, something that I was going to bring forward to the planning board, monies that we had targeted for codification. And our most capable assistant town planner has done that codification for us. So I'm going to suggest to the planning board that we reallocate those funds for the purpose of this study. And I think that would be a good way to start in looking at how we move this part of the master plan forward. And I think what we're going to need to be looking at really, if we're going to make significant progress with implementing the master plan, is to think each year, we're going to need allocate some funds towards its implementation because these are a lot of complex issues. The waterfront has state chapter 91 requirements. There's not, there might be some expertise. There's a lot of different parties. So having somebody who can come in and bring all the parties together at the same table and coordinate the work, I think makes sense. And then broadening it to the commercial district really allows for some economic development, for some mixed use. If we look at housing over commercial, we're really looking at providing another kind of housing that we don't have elsewhere. It's close to the T. This is one of the, it's close to the bike trail. I mean, this is one of the areas of town that has the most opportunity for a smart growth kind of development. So we really think going forward with the full study makes a lot of sense, probably in the next budget cycle, though. So Katie, if you'd like to add to that?
Just that I support Cheryl's request that the planning board strongly consider using the available, I think it's $15,000 for, for this purpose. This is the first tangible project that the master plan implementation committee is working on. The goal is to not let it sit on the shelf, but make it something that we're looking at actively and considering over the, over a 10-year period that the life of the committee is. So this is something that, it's concrete, it's a project that there's a lot of stakeholders who really would benefit from. And our board hasn't discussed it as a board because this really hasn't been something that's before us, the money's in the planning board budget. But as a member of the committee, under Cheryl's leadership and with Tim, both of them have done an awful lot of work talking with different possible providers for this type of a study. So I think we've, it sounds like we've got a good provider to do the work, who's got some expertise in this area with waterfront experience. And so my personal opinion as one member of the board and as a member of the master plan committee would be that the planning board really consider appropriating the money for this purpose. There's a, there's a real need for, for the condo association, the yacht club, the Friends of the Crew, even the farmer's market to get some direction on the issues that we've been talking about now for several months. And these issues were before the board of selectmen and the parks commissioners a couple of years ago when the yacht club lease expired. And at that point, we decided to, the swift hat shop building was just starting to generate some interest in town and we decided to take a look at the broader picture. And a lot of other things have come up in the meantime, so there hasn't really been a lot of time for our board to focus on this, but the master plan committee has really focused on it and done a lot of work on this topic. I would support Cheryl's suggestion.
So it's $35,000 proposal?
We've had them break it into two phases.
So this would be phase one.
This would be phase one.
So one question I have is based on what Katie was just saying, on the other stakeholders, are there any other stakeholder, 88 wharf comes to mind. What's, what is the stakeholding nature of 88 wharf? And is there, should there be an equitable match? Because that's not a, that's certainly not a not-for-profit, like the crew team is, for instance, or the?
Well, they actually have basically an offer on the table.
Well, they, the town has easement, they own some of the property in the parking lot area in particular, and they've, they are considering making it, right now, we have a one-year extension on an easement for that property. And they're considering making that more permanent. We don't have all the specifics on it, but they're, they've got some different ideas that they'd like to explore. They are very much in favor of the more diverse waterfront activity and supporting the high school crew team and the, and the masters crew in using the docks and having access to the, to the waterfront. So they're very much in favor of bringing more waterfront activity into the area.
It's the requirement of the town to provide an accessible waterfront use is my understanding, chapter 91, is that right, Bill?
You're almost there.
Okay.
But there's also issues down here that you haven't quite hit, but go ahead.
Well, just in terms of whether it's, who, you know, who should pay and who should benefit, et cetera, the town's required to provide the public access, is that right?
Yes.
And the way we're doing it right now is through a lease to the yacht club and also by having an access point at the end of the parking lot. But you can't get there without going across the 88 wharf property. So they're kind of, they're intertwined because it was part of the permitting. Am I wrong? Am I this wrong, Bill?
No, you're, you're right, but there's a few pieces that keep getting left out. And that is, people are saying that we have to rely on 88 wharfs' largeness for allowing us to trespass across their property. That's not true.
Right.
We have a, we have a permanent easement across that property and it came with a special permit to create that building. Those parking spaces that are there are there because those allowed an extra floor to get built on the building. So for as much as 88 wharf may like to think about that project or giving that lot to the town, we have to do something in the deed that's going to preserve those parking spaces because they go with the building. So this little bit.
But they're not, they're not dedicated to exclusive use of that building, right?
They're not.
Right.
But they're there, they were required to have X amount of parking spaces. Those are those parking spaces.
But they're open to anybody to use?
There is a, no, there's actually a plan for them. Service zone, it's open to the public. There's a, there's a set of numbers that were written into the special permit.
So the, the thing is, is when, when we look at this area comprehensively, I think it's a good opportunity to look and see whether that, those conditions all still make sense in terms of optimize the use of this land for its public purpose, right?
Yes.
And so that's really, there's legal issues, there's, in terms of those kinds of agreements, there's issues in terms of the chapter 91 requirements. I'm not fully aware of all of those requirements, I'll be honest, but I know they exist and I know that the consultant in terms of the chapter 91 is fully fluent with them. And we're going to need, this is why we're talking about this jointly, because the selectmen have a role here in terms of the lease with the yacht club, in terms of the agreement with 88 wharf. The parks commissioners have a role here because they own a lot of this land. So it's really a very collaborative, it's going to require collaborative effort. But it, that's why in, in large part, I think it makes a lot of sense for the, the master plan implementation committee. We've just really sort of, to get our heads around what the opportunities are here and to, and to decide that there would be a consultant to lead in a study effort here makes a lot of sense. And it would engage all of these people and all of these parties. So 88 wharf would, would be engaged. But in terms of the, you know, who should pay for the study, I think it's really a town effort because most of the land is owned by the town and the responsibility in terms of providing the amenity, in terms of the public access, is a responsibility of the town.
Most of the land is under the control of the park commissioners, including the yacht club building, which is, when it's gone over RFP, it's jointly been the selectmen and the park commissioners, but they are the ones who have the custody and maintenance of the property.
I've actually been having discussions with John Flynn over ownership down here. And you said that the bottom piece down here, that piece there, thank you, Tim, that's actually park department. That was the, the woman that gave it to the town in 1916, she gave it to the town for the town. Within a year, you could not swim on the site because the water was so polluted that they couldn't use it for that purpose. The rest of the land, in, in the early 1900s, they were doing the same thing that you're talking about doing right now. How do we take and use this for better public access? At the time, they had coal and lumber yards in this area. They used to have coal barges sitting in the area in front of 88 wharf. They couldn't get pleasure boats in because they couldn't get around the coal barges. They wanted to get rid of the commercial, they wanted to have it more recreational. That's when the issue came down that we had a waterfront committee. Our waterfront committee dissolved itself because it was made up already of the park commissioners. So the park commissioners oversaw that part of it. The lands never got transferred to them, but they were overseeing it for everybody. So there's a disconnect that took place in the time period from 1916 to 1919. At the same time, we went to war and everything stopped looking at the waterfront and they started pushing away from it. Afterwards, they came back, they started looking at it again. They did remove all of the commercial that was down there, which is why there used to be a whole new, there used to be a whole set of buildings around there. Some of the buildings up on High Street were sheds that were moved from the wharf area up to that area.
There's a lot of history, the historic commission.
It's all that history that, that needs to go, but it's, it's the ownership components aren't as clear as, it's all controlled by the, the park department. Well, it isn't by the deeds.
Do we have a copy of this proposal? Because I'm certainly not going to vote to defend it without reading it.
It went out last week.
Can I make a comment? So we pay to be a member of MAPC Metropolitan Area Planning Commission every year, and we don't do a whole lot with them. Has anybody spoken to them about what they might be able to provide for us for free?
Bill?
Or a member of their, their organization?
They'd love to do projects with you, but they always like to see you put money into the table.
Did we even inquire?
On this issue, no.
All right. I think we should do that.
Yes, we did. But we did it 15 years ago. We have not done it on this side.
Well, we've gone through the process of calling a bunch of consultants, I think we should call the one that we already pay.
I think that's a good idea. I think that they could lend a lot of credible support.
The second piece is, I think that this is very interesting. I think there's a lot of moving parts. I don't know, aside from somebody approaching the implementation committee, an organization, I don't, there was no public process about whether this should be the priority or the pilot project or something, demonstration project of the master planning committees, is that right? And I think I would feel more, I mean, there's a lot of competing demands in Milton, there's a lot of needs. And we, how do we know that this is the priority for the town?
Well, it grew out of a selectmen's meeting. We had a, we had a meeting with a lot of the stakeholders back in late spring, early summer. And Cheryl was there as our master plan committee chair and had offered that the master plan committee might be of assistance in this. And we thought it was a good, we, we talked about it at a subsequent meeting, we thought it was a good idea. We talked with the park commissioners because they do, they are the ones who control the yacht club building and who maintain it. And they also thought it was a good idea. So it was really the selectmen and the park commissioners together who thought, let's let the master plan committee start doing some work on this and see where the committee can take us.
And the meeting we had in August, which included people from the trustees, from the Milton Crew, the yacht club, the board, the parks commissioners, the historic commission, the farmer's market, the swift hat shop committee, the bike advisory committee, and someone representing the owner of the swift hat shop, all were supportive of a joint planning effort to look at this part of town. So there's any, the plant, the master plan implementation committee's met monthly. We've had, our agendas are advertised, they're all posted, our meetings are posted and they're all open to the public. And the people who have come to these meetings have all come with this particular area of interest. So yes, there's lots of places in town that are going to need some attention, but we have some moving parts here that we felt were important. The swift hat shop is one. We just heard earlier, now that there's the potential for someone looking to put a marijuana dispensary in that building, there's been discussion about are there other ways to encourage the owner of that building to keep the building and do a mixed-use development on that property or rather than tear it down or rather than relocate it? There's no historic protection really for it, but there's a lot of interest in historic preservation of it. There's the opportunity for the business district itself to benefit from a look at this area because there's, this is the, one of the few places in town where the town owns a lot of the land in question. So the town has the opportunity to take a leadership role, whereas most of the other parcels that we're going to look at or the regions we're going to look at are going to be privately owned. So it, and where we have parties who have asked us, 88 wharf trustees have some decisions to make, Milton Crew has some decisions to make, the selectmen have some decisions to make about the yacht club lease. And they're not, they're not just, there's actually some people who would like to see this move faster than the master plan implementation committee has actually moved it.
I guess, my, I mean, studying it, it's fascinating because, I mean, it, you know, it is a beautiful piece of property and, you know, I'd love to see, you know, a developed waterfront in terms of recreational waterfront. The problem is, is once you do the study, what's the cost to do it? And is there any, I can guarantee you that, you know, to make that useful water, it needs to be dredged. It's mud flats.
So on that, Tom, so I've actually had discussions with Mayor Walsh and John Barrows, who's his chief economic development officer, who's a classmate of mine. And there's a lot of, you know, excitement about this. You know, I think that we need to look regionally on this, you know.
I agree.
I've had the same conversation with Jay Casman, who's dredging the Panama Canal, who's living in our town now. There's excitement to this, but, you know, environmentally, I'm not so sure that we can do it. I don't know, and what's the cost to it?
Huge cost.
But with, with, when I say regionally, I say, you know, we as a town, you know, look at Boston, they're our neighbor, okay? Lower Mills is developing, it's evolving, the mayor lives there. They're looking to redevelop Matapan. We should be able to have, when I was a kid, we'd go into Matapan regularly, you know, Matapan should be able to come into Milton regularly. This makes our town stronger, it creates the value. So I implore you to, if you're going to look at this, look at this as a regional kind of waterway access and think big because.
And if you're going to think big, that means taking the dams down, getting rid of the PCBs. I mean, it's huge.
That's huge.
When you think that big.
That is huge.
When you're thinking big, when you think that way.
That's years and years down the road. In the meantime, we can have an opportunity.
You're also thinking about getting resources from other, other places, okay? And we're not narrow-minded in our focus. We're looking at bringing in regional resources to accomplish something for the greater good.
One thing that Cheryl didn't mention is the bond bill that was issued by the state has 200 or is it 250, 250? It's 250,000 in that bill. That's tied to economic development, so we don't think that that's something we're going to qualify for for this particular dock issue. The committee, the original bid, the RFP information that came in from the Friends of the Crew, you know, the yacht club said, look, we want somebody independent to look at it, we don't want the crews, the party there, and we said, why don't you guys recommend someone to us? Two, they didn't. And we've, through Cheryl and Tim's work, largely, we've gone out and found a different company that would do it, which is independent, doesn't have any existing relationships with any of the stakeholders. The idea was to just make it narrow enough right now so that we could try to address the dock issue because there's a real disagreement among the yacht club and the crew as to where the location should be. And based on which of three options they gave us, the costs are pretty considerably different. So there will be a cost to building the dock. The idea right now is as weird as it makes sense to build the crew dock that doesn't interfere with other uses there. And that's the kind of the narrow focus that we're looking at right now. We, that's why Cheryl said, when she mentioned the $35,000, that was one of the initial bids, but that was a broader study. So we asked, we've got $15,000 available in the planning board budget, if the planning board is willing to use it for the master plan purposes, can we try to do something smaller with that to at least start the process? And then, then we have to worry about fundraising and the crew and others may have to be involved.
Well, Terry Driscoll was here earlier. I think he anticipated that this part of the agenda would have gotten to earlier. He left and he said he would be at our meeting on Monday. He's from the Friends of Milton Crew. He's from the Friends of Milton Crew. And really what they, the, we're not talking about anything much larger than you're talking about, David, I think, but what we're talking about is being able to have the kids, the high school kids, there's girls' teams and boys' teams, and they, and the Masters who have to carry these boats, and then they have to put them down into the water, and there's a lag time of when they, the dock is available from the Yacht Club by at least three weeks, and they, their season starts earlier. So we're trying to address a very particular concern of a, of a user of town and, and, you know, people who are volunteers who are managing these programs to the benefit of the town, to the benefit of the kids of the town. And what they're saying is, it's not working well for us right now, we really would like for you to help us out here. And the problem, or one of the issues is that it would mean the Yacht Club may have to change a little bit the way they do things, and before it goes out for a new lease on that, it would be better to know if there's a place that a dock could be put that could accommodate Crew, that could accommodate also storage of the Crew boats and the Yacht Club boats, so they can work together. But right now, we don't know because we don't, we don't have expertise who can tell us that, yes, there's room in this little bit of waterway to add this dock for, for the Crew boats.
I understand this, Cheryl, and actually, I've had long-canted conversations with Terry and Terry, I consider Terry a good friend, and we had these conversations the other day. I'm fully aware of them, and he's fully aware of, aware of what I have actually brought to you tonight, and, and is very excited about those possibilities, but the focus should be on community voting first, and, and the Crew team, and the Masters program, because I think that's where you start.
Right.
I think, but I don't think there's any limitation to where we could go with this.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
That's the other thing, if, if we're community voting as well, then maybe it would qualify for an economic development bond issue. Is there any reason it couldn't be a shared dock?
Well, the, the study could help us say, well, if you did, if these things happen down the road, if much larger projects happen, dams were removed and other things.
And we're assuming that bond bill gets funded, too.
Yeah. I mean, if, if these much larger things happen, here's what you could do. But in the meantime, if you're looking at one-year outlook, or two-year outlook, or a three-year outlook, here's what you could do in the meantime, because I think that's what we're looking at in terms of really with Crew and with the Yacht Club. If something opened up or it made it, like, right now, there's very limited type of boat that can be accommodated in this location because-
It just needs to be dredged.
Yeah. And there's certain times of the day that you just can't do anything, right? So Crew has to work around that as well. So I think the, the issue we're trying to address now is something more short-term, and if there's, if, if we'd like to make the scope of this study to say, you know, let's, let's take a look at if we had dredging and if we had the dams gone, you know, what that might mean, and that might be a 10-year plan, because that's not something that's going to happen in a year or two, that's for sure.
So, so what you're saying now is, is resonating with me a lot, but it's resonating in the wrong direction, but, you know, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, in my opinion, shouldn't be looking at two years. So I have a, I have a fundamental problem with looking at anything from the Master Plan's perspective as two years or three years. That's an interim problem, we can solve it, that's fine, I'm happy to talk about using planning dollars to solve it, but Master Plan should be looking at what David's talking about and what, what's going to happen in 50 years, or 10 years, or 20 years. It's not, not how to solve the voting problem, with all due respect, because it's the Master Plan, it's not how do we solve this one problem for these two groups.
Well, if you're going to wait for a 10-year plan, you're going to have a plan that's going to be obsolete in 10 years, you're not going to make any progress in the next 10 years.
No, I don't think that's fair. I think you have to be thinking about policy that's going to drive what happens in 10 or 20 years.
That's what we're talking about, we're looking at zoning for this area. And the first part, we had to segregate it out, thank you. We had to segregate it out because there's not funds available. In fact, you know, these funds may not be available either, and then we'll tell Crew that there's no funds available, and they may go look for their own consultant, come back to the Board of Selectmen and with a different plan. But in the meantime, you know, we want to accommodate what we think is a good starting point for this, with a lot of support from a lot of other departments and constituents, that this is a good place to start. And I think the, the idea to tie this into the commercial district for a bit longer-range planning with funds in the next fiscal cycle that we can ask for in this budget round, which is in process now, that would allow us to look at this whole area.
That's, that-
I agree with Brian, I think that, that should be the goal, is to, to have a, have a study of what could the-
There's short-term and long-term goals in the, in the, in the Master Plan. There's, you know, the low-hanging fruit is longer.
He left it.
Sorry. So, you know, that being said, and I agree, there is, there is some low hanging fruit that could be done quickly in, in the Master Plan, but, but, you know, this is kind of a, and I think David said it too, it, it could be a regional project.
No question. I don't think Cheryl or I or Tim are disagreeing with any of that, but right now, you know, the Master Plan Committee's just getting started, and the idea is, it's either going to be, you know, a success or a failure, and this is something that we all kind of sat around the table and said, look, if we were just starting fresh and we were going to decide, let's open the Master Plan, pick what's our topic that we'd choose, it wouldn't be the wharf area. But there were things that all kind of came together in a confluence of events, the Yacht Club lease, the Swift Hat Shop building, looking, a lot of people in town would like us to do something with that. Now, there's another proposal now, but the easement that had, we just got a one-year extension on, the Crew coming into the Selectmen, not to the Master Plan Committee, but to our board with that request. So there's, you know, there's a lot that kind of came together that gave reason for the Master Plan Committee to look at this. And Cheryl said, we're looking at it more long-term as well, with what zoning could be done down there to encourage more mixed use in, in the area, but this is kind of an immediate need.
Brian, can I chime in with something real quick? We've, we've been talking a lot about the Yacht Club and Crew, and I think it's a little unfortunate, I mean, those are, those are two sort of major users on, on the waterfront, and, and the, the Crew team has been sort of, kind of, the, the driver of this discussion. But I think any, any study that happens here that seeks to accommodate facilities for, for Crew, and I think the study would be, what sorts of new facilities are feasible in this physical area? Any of those facilities, speaking to David's point, and Tom made the point also, those facilities would also benefit community voting. Everyone has access with their canoe or kayak or rowboat to get onto the waterfront here. There are sort of competing arguments as to how adequate those facilities are, how sort of advertised and promoted and sort of sufficient they are, but you could drop your boat in now. What this study would be looking for is, can we, are new facilities possible that could facilitate greater community voting, better access for the Crew team, which, which operates out of Milton High School, and also, commercial boating enterprises. I've spoken with sort of the, the major canoe and kayak vendor in greater Boston, and they said they've been looking for a spot on the De Ponte River almost since they've been in business. And, and this particular spot is something that they would sort of, you know, be interested in. It was a very preliminary conversation, but, you know, this study would be looking into what sort of facilities are possible to accommodate these different uses. And, and I understand your, your point about two years. Greater access to the river is one of the implementation goals in the Master Plan, and if it happens, you know, with this study or if it happens 10 years from now, if we want to implement the Master Plan, it's, it's going to have to happen. So, I mean, that's, I think, it's, it's a first step, but it's a step that'll happen at some point if we want to be successful with the Master Plan.
The other challenge I have from the $15,000 standpoint is that we have nine articles since 2014 in front of, that have been sent back to the Planning Board for further study, and the Planning Board has done nothing on them. So, understanding that Master Plan Implementation is very important, and I'm one of the bigger advocates for it, I do want to understand how this board is going to deal with these nine articles that are sitting in front of us that were sent back to us for further study, not, not denied or not rejected at town meeting, and we have done nothing. And I think we've all, you know, we've talked about it in various meetings, that, you know, the capacity of this board to become the engine of producing documentation along these, to accomplish some of these is probably, the capacity is probably not there, and maybe the expertise isn't there. So, you know, we need to, we only have $15,000. We need to figure out how to deploy it to accomplish a lot of different goals, and, and so I think we need to think about that as well.
And I add to that, so, I mean, the thing that was coming to my mind as an immediate priority is affordable housing. Every single project that we hear from, we hear, do what we want, or we're going to put a 40B in place. I think we should use every resource that we have to try to figure out a strategy to implement our housing production plan in a way that's thoughtful, that gets this monkey off our back, so we can do thoughtful land use planning around how to move forward with housing production that isn't always under the constant threat of, and people don't like the word threat, but it's true, every single project comes in and says, we're going to do this, or we're going to do a 40B. And that's how we're guiding our decisions, and I don't think that's very thoughtful. And I think that that's an immediate issue, but it's also a long-term issue, and if we don't get ahead of it, we're going to end up with these either very large-scale 40B projects in places we don't want them, or other projects that we don't really like and we wouldn't put there in places we don't want them, but we had no other choice.
The two, two of the articles that Brian's talking about, that the Planning Board took initiative on, and which I volunteered to take the initiative on, included Inclusionary Zoning and Accessory Dilling Use. Those are going to require some process because, you know, people want to understand the impacts in their neighborhoods, and we, we had that feedback from people. And we talked about when we decided that those articles wouldn't go forward, I think it was at the last fall town meeting, that, that we needed to design a process that gave people comfort, that the articles were fully vetted, and that the impacts were fully vetted. So, but I, I, you know, in terms of how that moves forward, zoning, the zoning components of those are one aspect of it, then there's other production pieces of it which don't have to do with zoning, right? So, in terms of policy. So we could bring those, this board is, in terms of its planning initiative, is the one that needs to take the lead on the planning articles, whether it be this area, whether it be the Inclusionary Zoning. We did have a vote of this board when we, when we decided to work on those articles, the, the board voted that those would be given priority. All right. So then, the, the issue is they've been dropped from work because there's been so much else on the plate of the board. So if, you know, there, that, the housing production plan, you know, and the Master Plan are in sync with one another because they were, they were done basically at the same time, and there's implementation recommendations in both of those that have to do with the, those two articles, the Inclusionary Zoning, and there's, I'm sure there's other things in there, too, besides those two, that we could take initiative on. But that doesn't mean we, we're in these either or. We have an opportunity right now, we have a scope of work right now, we have, this can be done in three months, and we can have an implementation recommendations by February.
So my concern-
My, my point is if we have resources to hire a consultant to guide these other articles, maybe we could move those forward in three months, too.
But my other point, my, so, I mean, to April's earlier point about affordable housing, I actually think studying this area could provide an answer for a portion of affordable housing. I think a likely result of that study, as you would hear, put in mixed uses and get some affordable housing out of it, and I think that's a likely scenario, but not out of the $15,000 study.
The 35.
The biggest study.
That's the 35.
So I'm, I'm going to tell you, I think you're coming to us with the wrong request.
We don't have 35 to ask for, but we would come back in this next budget cycle and ask for another 20,000. We have, asked for 15 in the budget that we have, and we're coming up with budgets right now for next fiscal year, right?
Yeah. That's my next job, because our budget is due December 1st.
I think a while ago, where you were heading with 88 Wharf or anybody is, I don't understand why the Planning Board is coming up with 15,000 when there's so many stakeholders and nobody's, nobody else is taking part in this financial endeavor.
I mean, I'd love Town Meeting to vote $35,000 in May to spend on this initiative and get it done next summer.
But I think to Mike's point, that maybe we'd be more likely to do that if there was a match from a private entity.
Yeah.
A private entity, or-
You know, it'd be nice to, certainly the Planning Board, it's, it seems like a great idea, I think the Crew team, that'd be great, but, you know, it's, it just seems like, maybe because you're in that position, Cheryl.
My concern is we give you $15,000, Cheryl, and we never get 20,000 approved, and, and now we've just invested it, we've done what Milton is great at doing, we've solved an immediate problem, and we've left ourselves open to having to throw good money after bad when some other plan comes along because we're not the-
Even beyond that, you've pointed out that there's places we could probably get, enlist some consultants to help us with some planning issues.
Yeah.
These are, these are all hypothetical, we can get, we can pull from this, and we can pull from that, and we can pull from that. Take a stand on something that somebody, that other constituents in the town have already weighed in on. They, all of these people have weighed in on this.
No, no, I, I don't, I don't disagree with you, but it-
They're not, they're not saying, don't do this, do this instead. This is what they've asked us to look at.
But like you said, you've got a lot of stakeholders, you've got everybody in town involved, why is it that the Planning Board is the only one that's accessible to kick in 15,000?
This is mostly town-owned property. We're looking at town, we're looking at amenities for the town.
Planning Board is at the town of Milton, the Planning Board is only in a, one element of the town of Milton.
I can speak to that, Mike. We, we looked at the Selectmen's budget, we, Town Administrator looked at some of the budgets that are under our jurisdiction, and we've got some extra expenses this year because we've gone through a Town Administrator search, we've incurred some other costs in some other areas, so we haven't been able to identify any. Cheryl did identify, look, we had 15,000 for codification, Tim was able to do that work, that has freed up some money in, in the Planning Board budget. So this is an option that the committee is presenting.
The Parks Department, are there any other boards that, or?
Not, no, I mean, we had, yeah, we had a contingent budget.
We should spend more money.
It was a brutal year.
Apparently, we should spend them.
But at one point, I'd just like to close our, at least my portion of this with this, you know, 12 years ago, when the prior Board of Selectmen, prior Park Commissioners were looking at going out for an RFP on the, on the lease for the Yacht Club, they were having the exact same conversation we're having today. They were talking about, we'd really like to bring some more waterfront activity into the, into the, into the wharf area, we'd like to get more people down there, walking around the area, using the waterfront, bringing some canoes and kayaks down there. There was talk about it. We had the exact same conversation two years ago when we let that lease expire, and it's running month to month now, and the Parks Commissioners had the same view at the time, they've had some turnover in their board as well, but we were, both were of the same view. We wanted, before we go out and put this, this lease out for bid, let's try to get an idea of how can we bring some more activity here, let more people make use of the waterfront, because it is a great asset and a great resource, and it's underutilized. So this would actually address that concern that has been a concern. I mean, I read memos from Marion McGentrick from 12 years ago, and, and to former Town Administrator, and that's what they were looking at, was trying to bring more activity into the area. So the Master Plan Committee said, look, this is current, there's some immediate needs here, there's some immediate requests that have come to our board in the parks, this is something that might be appropriate for us to look at, and that's, that's a little bit of the history on it.
And it is planning. I mean, I can understand the delegation of the planning budget, which we threw out there to sort of, you know, we put it out there for codification, I think there were some rumblings that we would potentially reallocate it for implementation of Master Plan as well, which I'm-
No, I'm not, I'm not against anything, I think it's being misread here, I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea, too.
Well, you, and I'll make one last point, I promise, because I'm going to leave shortly, but eight, like you started with 88 Wharf, and people have commented, they'll canoe, they'll paddleboard, yeah, people at 88 Wharf will canoe, paddleboard, could they throw 1,000 bucks at it? I mean, could anybody else, you know, stepped up to the plate a little bit? I mean, it's, it's, it seems just unfair that the Planning Board is going to take every set that we have and throw it at this, and the heck would, like you said, nine articles that we're just letting sit around.
So Cheryl, I think what I'd like to say, we, we have a budget that's due December 1st, we're obviously not going to achieve that, that deadline, correct?
I put you in for 15 and 15, 15 on the non-contingent, 15 and 15 for the contingent.
Okay.
So that's 30,000.
So I think the question would be, at the December 8th meeting, we have an idea of what Master Plan Implementation would like to see for funding of, of Master Plan Implementation that we could put into the planning budget, but dog ear for Master Plan appropriately, whether it's the 20,000 to do the second phase of this, or so, I would be happier approving this if I knew the longer-term plan was something that we're identifying identifying as an objective and hopefully going to be funded for.
Well, I think when we talked about our budget last year, I suggested we include every year at least $30,000 for master plan implementation. And we put that, I think, 30 into the contingent budget last year.
Yeah, we lost it, right.
Right. And I still believe that that is an amount that would allow us to make progress. If we want to make progress, big progress, we're going to need hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I don't think we're going to have an appetite for that.
I don't know which one it's going to come from, but you're right.
So I think we have to tackle it, you know, in pieces. And, you know, the master plan implementation committee is charged with making some recommendations.
I think what you're hearing here is support, but I think we'd like to see, I want to see the longer-term plan. And so, fine, but what we identified, 15 and 15 probably isn't going to do it, so...
But there's other sources, you know?
There are other sources. But, you know, I just, I'd like to see a plan. So I think I'd like to, I'd like to think about it a little bit more until December 8th because I'm just, I'm going back and forth. I want to have a conversation, and it doesn't have to be tonight, about these nine items because the town meeting asked us to talk about these, and it's been two years on some of them, and we've discussed nothing. So we have to talk about it.
And I think all that being said, the short-term issue of the Milton Crew and them having a dock is, I think we could potentially deal with that separately as a short-term issue because I think they do need a dock. They do need some space to put their politics.
And before December 8th, could you look into what April asked about? Because that would be an important question to answer.
Yeah, I'm happy to call maybe.
So that's what the consultant should be working on, and maybe it isn't $35,000 because what David said earlier, if you come in with a regional plan, you're going to have this plan sitting there that you spent 35, 40, 50,000. And they're going to come in with a plan like this is going to be like...
I see.
Having a regional plan with Boston is not any...
That was nice, you did that little thing, but we're going to do this.
Is not going to happen in the next year or two, that's for sure.
No, probably not.
But it's a good goal to have as a master plan. And I love the idea of talking about Mattapan. I've been saying that for years. Why aren't we talking about Mattapan Square? It's the other gateway to our town. So those are the kind of things that we'd love to talk about.
To take what Katie said earlier, I just, one last thing with that, is that 12 years ago, they had the same conversation in the same part of town. And I would like to be, as chair of the master plan implementation committee, actually somebody who can actually get something done. And not 10 years from now say, boy, that thing that's just sat on the shelf because the town couldn't come up with 15, 25, $30,000 to make steps towards it.
We have a strong master plan implementation committee now. Hopefully, you have a planning board that's, I think, voicing support for it, but needs a few more answers specifically towards the MAPC and, you know, and where, what our long-term plan is as well on finalizing this plan. Because I want to, I'm pushing you to make us go further because I think that's what the...
Well, we've got another $100,000 if we could do the traffic piece of it. There's lots of pieces that cost a lot of money.
The traffic piece, I want people that are bringing additional cars to our town to pay for. I pay for it all the time. I spent $50,000 in Wellesley last night for that purpose. So that is where we should be looking at some of these applications that are coming before us and bringing major traffic to our town and saying, we have a fund and we expect you to contribute to it. And it's done in every other community, and we should be doing that.
That's how Quincy's going to pay for it.
Of course it is.
Traffic and affordable housing are our two big overarching goals. This one is a more immediate, short-term. We've got bigger long-term goals.
Brian, can I, I don't know, make a suggestion? What I've been doing for the other lead agencies and then the planning board as lead agency on a number of implementation goals is, I've broken out all of the planning board goals throughout all of the implementation sections in the master plan. And they, you can sort of sort them by priority, by whether they're low-hanging fruit or not. You can sort them by whatever you want. I can distribute that list so that you all have sort of an idea of, if we're going to follow the master plan, this is what the planning board is expected to achieve. And then, you know, sort of determine what your priorities are if we want to sort of look towards a budgeting process, you know, figuring out, okay, these are, you know, these are the highest priorities, these are the lowest hanging fruit. What can we, what can we do? And, you know, that's information that's all out there. I can get that to the board.
So I would like to see a public process around that. I would like to see the community weigh in. Community weighed in in developing the plan. I'd like to see them have an opportunity to weigh in on the priorities of...
Outside, independent of the master plan implementation.
Well, maybe then that's a role for the master plan committee, or do an online survey or something. I don't know. Just feel like...
The one thing that I would say about the, there was a lot of outreach and a lot of participation in the development of the master plan. And I really feel as if the, there was, identified in the master plan were things that were considered low-hanging fruit, some that would take longer to implement. But that, the idea was that each department would begin to tackle them so that they would tackle the low-hanging fruit first, and then they would develop plans for how they would attack the longer, the things that had a longer horizon so that would require funds.
I'm not sure that is low-hanging fruit. I mean, maybe the dock is.
No, this is not low-hanging fruit.
Yeah. So, I mean, that is a general approach to the implementation. So one of the things that we've talked about a lot at the committee is not to reopen the two-year planning that went into the master plan, but to focus on what is recommended in there and getting those things implemented. And then if it has, obviously, it should be a living document. So if there are things that need to shift in there, sure. So if the town, I mean, one of the things that we said when we prioritized the articles that we were going to look at is if people in the town had come to us with a request, so like on noise, like on signage, like on lighting, those were all that we were going to put on a priority because people, because people in the town had asked us to do it. This is the same thing. This area, people in the town have asked us to take a look at. So if we're going to change the way we want to prioritize it, I think, you know, the planning board ultimately will have to decide on the things that the planning board is targeted with taking the lead on. This one, there's really so many parties that no one party was really charged with taking the lead on. So we said as the master plan implementation committee that we would take a lead on getting all the parties together and to decide what was a good way to move forward. But it's really not the committee's role to take the lead on most of these things. It's really planning board, selectmen, you know, other departments' responsibility to take the lead.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea for Tim to identify those for us is a good idea. I think we have citizens speak. We have, certainly have plenty of opportunities for the public to speak. And at some point, we do have to sort of let the process take hold and start moving forward. And we have plenty of opportunities for the public to weigh in along the way. It's sort of what we heard tonight.